...that allow for services in San Benito County, comes with what's called AAA, and the county has a designated recipient of those funds from San Benito County. It goes through senior council of San Cruz County and San Benito County. Those competitive grant funds are applied for and awarded to a successful applicant. The funds were awarded to Hovest Antonio in March of 2025. These are credited funds that are state-marked and fully marked to provide services or in county. There is confusion when you have one provider that provided the services for someone that feels those are their funds. They are committed, and that usually goes out in any grant fund, usually on a four or five cycle. The city hall is does not award these funds, nor are they bestowed of these funds. The city hall has provided free lease, free utility since 1989, with a lease that expired and has gone month-to-month since 1998. Okay? We had discussions, our park director of discussions, reviewing the termination. The termination note provided was within the scope of the contract. The item on your agenda this evening is to discuss lease terms for Hovest Antonio in the building. That is the item is, is a express interest in keeping space in that facility. The kitchen, those services provide meals, been awarded by body that is designated as a state California to contribute the funds competitively to the institution. They've gone through a competitive process for state funding for those funds. Through this process, there are a total of seven different fund streams they allocate. This fund stream are what helped fund Hovest Antonio overall together, that's all the differences they see. The services were awarded to multiple different parties, none of which were awarded to Hovest Antonio. Again, cities not, uh, city does not award those funds, those funds are not, are not in our hands. So what we are doing is we are talking with the representatives of those organizations, because the center is not shutting down, the center will not close. If they close before June 30th, the grant and contracts with the organization go through June 30th, providing through June 30th, with dollars earmarked for the county. So as we work with the very providers and a few last meeting or the meeting before, sorry, I had a date in front of me, we worked with another organization and brought discussion of a potential lease with them. This looked like similar to a job center, you have multiple agencies providing various levels of service to the senior that come to the center. So much so, that the city has dedicated their budget over $300,000 to repair the bathrooms, make them more senior-friendly and friendly, that'll going out in short. And this last week, I gave our park director authority to move some of the staff to a building that we refurbished on the top park hill, which is, you have to put some of it in or not, but it's pretty much almost ready to go. And what it'll do, free up additional office space, additional senior services. Some of the transportation services, heard about transportation, those are awarded to council governments. Again, not through the city, and those are not our funds. So I wanted to put some clarity, because it seems the feeling in this room is that the services away will not be a senior center. The city does not have control over who the operator provide of those services, but we remain committed to have space for the services, continue to make events in the center.
Mayor Stevens?
Uh, check with me, is that okay?
Yes, it's against. I just think since so many Spanish-speaking people here, we need to present them as I'm happy to that, or you can do it, or let us do it. But I want to just come around and we can translate, we can get correct information there, and we appreciate that when you can send it forward.
Do you want to do it, or I can do it?
Manitos, the central senior, um, can remember, araz vas la tracción para que entiendan a qué reventar en español.
Muchas gracias a todos que están aquí, hablar en respeto al oficio de señor Andrés. Queríamos notificarles y decir que la ciudad de Hoster no es quien se da el dinero para los servicios. Hay una oficina que se llama tres A, que es la oficina asignada para dar este dinero. Enero, muchas agencias escriben que es competente, compite a esas dos dobles. La ciudad de Hoster está ustedes en esto aquí, nosotros estamos dando el edificio gratis de renta, gratis de utilidad, desde 1989, y en novios novayos vio mesas diciendo, la renta y utilidades fueron utilizadas. De señores, señores, de dinero a otras agencias, no quiere decir que es que solo de señores va a ser. Vamos a hacer todo posible para seguir con servicios. También nosotros vamos a desopar edificio, que nuestros empleados están del de temer de recreción, para morlos a otro lugar, para poder tener espacio para dar servicios para las señores. Vamos a decirle, los servicios van a continuar. Jóvenes no hacen persona de los servicios, porque nosotros no tenemos la autoridad de dar dinero a jóvenes, es otra agencia. Los servicios van a continuar, los servicios de comida, los servicios de tratación, nada más ser dado por agencia. Hemos contado, los jóvenes están tratados para servicios hasta junio 30, 2025. Tienen que seguir los servicios hasta junio 30, 2025. Después de esto van a hacer otros, otras agencias, los servicios van a seguir continuando.
If I may, mayor, we have requests being resumed from the executive director of the city council, which is the fund. So I've checked Mary outside of public country, comfortable with, I mean him, your decision.
Okay, let my head hear from the city council, thank you.
It's Kemp for seniors.
Clay, so everything he says accurate, there's one thing that I need to reassure the seniors about, and that is that services will continue, target dates to provide new services start by first when the contract ends. However, the news say for Hovest Antonio, the plan stop providing services after this variety is kind of shocking. That is new information to us, and we'll do the best we can to start services up sooner if that turns out to true. All regarding transportation, the same plan is in place, that's an issue that we control, that the local transit authority, who I spoke with this afternoon, fully intend to continue all transportation services that are currently being provided. So I just really want to speak, make sure the council, and especially the seniors who are resting today, worry, are reassured that the services will continue for them. Again, the closure pending this Friday, I'm just finding out about it right now, so we came to mitigate that price, but there will continue to be meals provided, socialization provided, rates provided, and all the services that our seniors are used to having. I've been partners with Hovest Antonio and the city and county for this entire duration of that program operating, and our loyalty remains to the older adults there. So just provide more information, I'm willing to answer questions that any ad, and we will be sharing the information with the seniors as well as the city council. So thanks for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, I'm translating, Clay. So señor Clay, que esté acá con los seniors, no puede estar, que los servicios sí van a seguir, esos continúan el mismo edificio, no se preocupen por eso. A junio de año, si contrato para dar servicios hasta fin de junio, y si es que a por alguna razón nosotros no pueden continuar en esos servicios, es a echar, el senior que va, sí va a hacer todo posible para asegurar que ellos pueden empezar el fin de junio. Transportación sigue, la mitad sigue, todo va a seguir en el mismo edificio, van a, van a servicios propietarios, de todos modos, servicios continuar. Es nada más otra seguridad, otra persona, son nosotros vamos a seguir con ese saque que servicios sigue, gracias. Okay, I think ready to go, I mean, okay, okay, we're continuing with the agenda. We're going to continue with the agenda, Mr. Bre, I apologize, but you not know. We are going to continue to want to reveal the closing items that we'll be going to for a period time.
Yes, mayor, there's soon government codes section 5957.6, 18 designated representative city manager Dave Mario, innocent city attorney William Melli, employee organizations, employees international union, NBIU, Gof21, Star Fighter Union, Jeff F. Locri, 395, Master Police Officer Association, HPOA, non-resented employees. The next item is construction property negotiators pursuit government codes 759568, property 300 Street, Hollister, 495023, agent negotiator, David Murray, city manager, she party, Hovest Antonio, Antonio, under negotiation, this term.
Okay, so we're going to go into closing, and we're going to have part of them for our closing items, and then you will come back, continue the agenda. So thank you, your patience has stepped forward a bit, thank you.
In the closed session items and we'll continue on so let me go to the city attorney you have any to report on the closing items.
So the negotiations and continue the discussion and end of open and tight so the item continue with respect to the negotiations that are saying to report.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, so we're going to move on to sort of the and I'll just let the public know that the Puerto Rico Health Foundation was to be to attend so we'll be doing their proclamation at event tomorrow so we are going to give that tonight but I just do want to say to them and them for all that's done and it will be formally acknowledged tomorrow at another ceremony. People input is a time for any audience to speak on the item on the agenda within the district matter jurisdiction and council speakers are available in the lobby to be committed even to the C clerk for speaking and the city attorney please come to the podium state your name and city director speak city council if you join please go on bottom of the screen raise your hand join by zooming your phone start access nine each year limited three minutes thematic put out the date law prohibits this account from this scene making action on the item on the agenda so do we have any comments?
I have one speaker Ray Baez.
I have Mr. Baez please. Oh no, I saw him. Is he still here? I see him here.
Ms. Baez, did you want to provide comments here in lobby?
Yeah, I don't see. Okay, 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 so we'll move on to consent items. Any member of the county have any?
Yes, Mayor, so we have a special guest in chambers and it is consent point four. The board called quiet in the committee and we got us two guests.
We're going to do that your public comment part. Okay, yeah, because you're going to ask him to come straight so do that your comment. Okay, so let me just go to sequence. So let me do questions or minutes any comments can I have some check for? Do public comment section so do you have any figure cards?
I haven't received any speakers. Sounds like some of me.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Shay. Oh, hold on a second, I'm sorry. Just I see the hand for Mr. Baez on Zoom, so must be on Zoom. So I'm gonna let I'm just a few seconds I keys on he's here in person and it looks like he zooms. Let's give him an opportunity to speak and then we'll want to, Vice Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry I had to run. I want to spend some time with my kids. I'd just say good evening staff and city council members I want to forgive the opportunity to speak today. My name is Rene Baez. I'm a field representative for the carpentry union. I'm not here to speak on a project. I'm here to speak as a citizen who works in trades and just wondering do we just support the adults upcoming school graduates do not end up becoming a doctor, lawyer, an engineer, or a landscaper, right? I've been looking low career fairs, central trade hall, Hollister High School giving recommendations to schools all throughout Saville County and other cities. Speaking to parents and students who are wondering what do they do after they graduate to make a wage? It's disheartening when you gotta convince the students that learning the trades is a viable option but the reality where we live only made it harder. A city that refuses to grow and break development, it feels like we're just gonna cycle no doubt. Many of our youth are designed the idea of work from away living with parents their own option. I believe with small growth foster development and improved infrastructure create jobs drive economic progress some thinking the graduates gonna do after they graduate. The work the average home cost is about eight thousand. That means you make over a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand plus for live here in Hollister own. What are we doing to support students graduating this year? How are we gonna help them provide, I wanna provide paying jobs that benefit the community? I guess so we need to focus on, I have like me being a trade in the carpentry we have over three hundred families that live here in Hollister plus the other hundreds thousands of kids that drive to San Francisco for work when we be built here. It's not, it's not mid or whatever that we're gonna grow. It is city, it's booming but we need to buy good paying mobile wages and jobs for our graduates come up. So I'm just gonna let out there appreciate you staff and also members of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baez. Okay, so we're moving on. I am gonna give the further advice we appreciate to acknowledge and introduce.
Yeah, so ten night eight point four is a resolution moving Boy Scouts America Eagle Scout candidate complete a project on ground at Veterans Memorial Building naming the Veterans Memorial Building as project beneficiary. The candidate is Al Segura and I think he prepared a little words here. So I had to just maybe learn a little bit more about the boy scout and we all learn something about that and just get honest.
Good morning, Steeds. Good morning, Steeds, Congress members and something. I'm Alia from Chief 55, my current junior at Hollister High. Acting on Eagle Scout project, I take a few statements. My project is request your permission to forward. Eagle Scout project is designed to be merely just a research. It is an opportunity for scout to develop real leadership, product management, and communication skills while leading something meaningful and lasting for me. Many of you know there are already many beetle memorial outside Hollister's building. Honoring those who have seen previous conflicts as where one would be. However, I know there's significant gap. There is clearly no more recognition of veterans who served more recently. My project seeks to honor U S veterans Pat Anton by making a vegetable always monument amongst these existing memorials. I believe that those are the much more recent conflicts such as the Gulf War, Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, and many others deserve full recognition of their service and sacrifice. The project will have several components, installing a large podium like border to the right of the existing Vietnam War memorial. On top of the border, a mountain back, the vegetable was by leaving saying this back is a, is a vault. And I will also landscape their patches in the front and right side of the building and sign three eighths inch California gold decorative rock with bead beer fabric on it. To ensure proper drainage, I will maintain the existing rope to prevent flood. Stepping stool be for access and the visual of the area. Goal and make none of the vegetable more polite inclusive and respectful for all of those who regret regardless of who, where. All practical are due to the three nations. Thank you for time, city attorney. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for you did such a great job. We're proud of you and happy you are resident of our city. I mean, that makes us proud to see our young people in something credible and I know being an Eagle Scout is no small feat. We many grateful seeing that thin of your project. I know what's gonna be amazing. I'm just, I'm really looking into it. Sorry that will swing down with projects and go back again. Sure it's gonna be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so yeah, follow all of that. Like it's incredible. Okay, so it's back to our consent agenda items and can I motion somebody?
I'll do, Steven, thank you.
Okay, can I second?
All set.
Okay, we do a call vote?
Vice Mayor Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Sendus?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Councilmember Miranda?
Yes.
In your seats.
Yes.
Motion pending, thank you.
And then move on to the next item. So we are going to move item nine point one is resolution for West Fairview specific plan amendment sign architecture review twenty two dash thirteen additional permit twenty twenty two dash five, bright future recovery.
Mayor Stevens.
Okay.
I'm gonna write myself this item my partner contract the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so Councilmember Sendus will sit in the wing here. We did this item and we'll end in backward time. Thank you, Councilmember Sendus. Okay, Daffra, please, or go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight you review the bright future recovery project. The future recovery is located one thousand view road on an existing parcel which developed with existing single family residents. That existing single family residence is currently be used as a living facility. The parcel is one point one five acre size and they're at this way off air view. This project, the split object includes several different printing types. There is a request for a civic amendment to allow construction of the facility with development standards proposed and the requirements proposed. Their site and architectural review is required for new building proposed as well as improved on the site. As a condition, use permit for sobering facility. Any facility over seven is required additional permit. And so you are aware the being committed review project April four, men's council will all of the process posed. A slight different normal project has required council review and approval because of the civic plan amendment component of the project. And so without that specific amendment, either the additional permit or the site and technical review would be approved. So all of these remaining types of council. For this specific amendment, once in fair road is loaded with a west review civic plan, the first phase specific plan identify a development of a parcel and over time with the one hundred unit rental house project of which was recently approved as well as all family residences. This parcel allows if other parcels are included in this specific plan area in the end that they were developed that development this, these are parcels would inform through the goal impulse of the civic plan. So that is why this was included with it. When the tenant came through for homes for a fair view, this parcel as well as the other one wasn't off the tenant app. But again, it's in the civic plan area. So the development standards look within the civic plan due for the product and as they're written mostly for whole family residence dwellings and local rental subdivision, it wouldn't allow the posed number of things aside as well as a setback there resting. The map of view is the proposed site layout. I can see existing building is, is remain on the site and existing residential was used a surveying facility amendment and will continue to so for purpose. The app is also proposing to construct a new one thousand six hundred and eighty one square for resident building and that in the light orange color as well as new administration bill which will be two thousand eight hundred and eighty nine feet side. And that building is the building catering closest to Fair Road. There as I meant for is existing access off air view road will continue and I'll discuss a little bit more about road but that road will continue and there'll be eight set from road blocking access to the site. Other improvement include new landscaping such as views trips and other items out there. There is hose ratio areas for residents as a football and basketball. The new to orientation of the site with fair road, it's to see the site as its existence and the new fence, it will be further see the buildings. What this is the front of the new administration would like it back with some twenty feet from Fairview Road so it backed away. Only a portion of the top of the build will be built from few road. It were trying to get a slower speed on that road. So this is the new administration building and then this is new residential build will be corrected on site. Both these builds would for block existing single family residents from Fair Road but again like only the top of both those builds. As I mentioned before, a condition use permit is required to operate out of the occasional use is required operate expand so living facility. And the operator proposes to increase the total number of people served to maximum twenty two people. Residents will on site and will not access cars. They will within existing house and the new residential building services will be provided on site. A track analysis prepared to ensure that there was safe exiting entry onto air view road due to change site and analysis identified improvements that be made safety and those included in the final project plan that are reviewed tonight. And it's important note that if this was actually developed, they could have total of six residential dwellings on site so increase in number of people in this project similar to you could be if it had been subided and abstracted as part of residential. Because this project included a minor modification, we did need review further under sequo. So this site as well as the larger west review specific plan was included when the nineteen ninety west free specific plan I R and then two thousand seven supplemental E I R. In nineteen ninety eight, West Fairview is a plan, the proper specific E I R, this part was specifically discussed and required that the entrance from Fairview be shifted to interior of development should it ever be dipped in the fear. So review this project, what driveway exists on Fairview, it was a conflict with E I R. So study needed to see it for unsequo determine if it would be any impacts. So based on being that initial assess staff prepared to prepare an initial study to review the minor access modification from or not move it again but to that fair view and a track analysis was prepared to ensure that there be safe exit and entry from site Fairview. At analysis, they mentioned that it be safe and that the roof just wouldn't see what we would otherwise have seen with a single family rental development. Again, it recommends some modification to this site to ensure people properly exit enter Fairview. Based on analysis and such determination, initial C, staff determined that a dem, the E I R would be an appropriate review method for the project. Because there is a minor change with that when the drive, not when the drive away Fairview that not not create any additional impacts beyond this previously. So inclusion, the site is large and is suitable for the type of product proposed use of the site provide additional sort service for residents of the city. State California has determined that these types of facilities are residential uses and therefore would be compatible with the surrounding area. Although not available from air view road, the new buildings are actively designed, they incorporate architectural enhancements, colors and materials to, to provide an enhanced swing of the area and sequent improve for the project to turn that the project would not result in any environmental pass. Staff is remending that the can approve project by adopting a resolution approving agenda to the West Fairview Civic Plan I R. Resolution approving amendment west fair specific plan to allow the construction of the additional buildings, the site development is posed. Resolution proving that an architectural review for the two buildings and red site improvements and resolution opening additional use permit to a twenty two but so living facility on site.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Do we have any question, council?
Just have a question. My parents bought Fairview's farm center. How if they don't have cars, do they, will access just own?
So they are only allowed, so the rest of the facilities tend to be at facility. If there are employees of the site and there be vehicles that come them in town and for various sense, the operator here and kids be better to the, how plans operating the facility have more points for. But there will be employee, there will be employee and vehicle transport residence.
Other questions, comments? Thank you for that. We will now open the public hearing on this item. Do you have any public comment cards for this room?
There are no speakers this item.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing then on this item. So council, do, do we need any more discussion deliberation? Any questions or comments? Do we, somebody make a motion?
Commercial proof to drop the staff recommendations for one four.
Okay, I will back in. Can we do a roll call?
Vice Mayor Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Miranda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stephen?
Yes.
Motion says zero.
Thank you. And can I just say, I just gonna do a glow like indulge the I am social worker who wore my entire life with any people that and for making a beautiful for individuals and family be serviced and they deserve that. So thanks so much for all that looking for the same thing project and I would like to come and visit site was done. Thank you. Okay, so we have some members come back in and we'll continue with our agenda. Okay, we are going to now do a plan development and head map on debt everything phase two subdivision. Can we get this report? Thank you.
Everglan is used to of the Everglan which is currently are constructed by K homes. Everglan is the lightly colored area. You can see a map above you. The street's been instructed and may be build homes and armo homes out right now. When the first Everglan projects reviewed, the existing house located within Everglan didn't, they did not opt to anything that portal at that time. And so they have before the city to include to construct additional units within Everglan on, on the parcel which is shown the arrow. Project site is owned, single family rental performance early to allow for smaller tenants. This was in the district, it would require a modification to the established standards. The project is an extension of Everglan and Ever, of Everglan and Everglan was approved a plan development to offer modify setbacks, modify setbacks for the property. This project is part of the upper roadmap plan would include project wide public benefits in exchange for approval of the map, exchange or construction of the map plan area. This is a showing the overall location of Everglan two as you can see with the worker planes. It is, is like fin with existing don't you can see the lighter line lines Everglan which is currently under construction and it really takes the existing very large parcel and first step is it. So there are six additional houses with the existing residence two room. Development standard of the site, as mentioned, are typical, the rest of Everglan development, there are reduced setback for the, the front of the house. And then there's a request setback reduction for at the rear of the property due to the angle of the prop lines, the way the houses are to be placed on. Some of the rear stacks will be quite short and extending length due to the angle of the property. So as you can see on this app with the So as you can see on this app with the angle of the properties, there are two properties in particular where corner of the of the houses is quite square. Obviously, one is that existing and one is to the pretty to death. And then the remainder of the properties, then there are new stacks consistent with the phase one Everglan development. In on May eighteenth, nineteen nineteen, the Hollis City Council certified incremental act report for the development of the rural chapel, chapel master plan project. And this site was included in that EIR. Because project is consistent with what identified in that ER, further review under C is not required and all the measures that are contained within that ER continue apply to this project as they do to the Everglan one, Everglan phase one development. Based on that, no further review is required under sequo. A proposed project is a small infill site will be granted, said it is part of overall Glan development. It allow for the structure of additional homes in the city and will allow for front improvements on rural road to initiate the design of that one. Proposed as the homes is consistent with the homes that are currently in construction by key. So the project will fully integrate to the design of that project. Again, the sacks posts for site are are consistent with the specs of forever on. So the field of houses a lot will consist with what was a forever. Staff is recommending that council approves project by opting ordinance, approving a reason to a development and also by adopting a resolution proving the tentative map to subdivide parcel into seven.
Thank you for that. For report, we have any questions or comments, some members just go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm a little confused with this fact. So let me run the back layman's terms. They are moved to build how many houses are out there generally?
Eighty-eight.
That's about eight homes. And then decided wanted to add six more. And that's why I get back to us, want to build six more single family homes out there. I've got more questions.
Yeah.
Allow me to add them. Is any of those eight homes affordable?
No, we did not include.
Is there a, is that, there's a pocket part there? Okay. Um, no affordable, multifamily or all single family?
Char, my plan is also family.
All single, but they want six, is it small single families?
Yes.
We have the right to say, thanks, no thanks. That's bringing us, right? Have the to make that addition?
Because.
We have authority.
Yes, because we changed the zoning ordinance, planned events now are a reason that is before the council.
Okay, I was asked this question, I want to know what projects like, we need more parks, we need affordable. And if not, we'll build affordable, then we need multifamily use. And instead of give them a person to setback, they can build single family homes, that would get to do some multifamily apartment or townhouses or things that would be affordable design. But it's big. So we cannot tell them what to do, we have the right to say no and vote no this, rather than add more single home. And if we build multifamily, that would all increase arena number, which no are problematic for us, right?
It's a, it's residential, so it is complicated. We have the housing count of the act, which limits your dial of certain residential objects. They are requiring a spat that's that's not within our zoning ordinance. So that's the only area where you have purview.
So attorney can just win and help me adjust second of decision here tonight.
Right, so you do have the ability deny.
Okay.
But what before tonight, the set correct, the zoning setback?
It's a, the lot is technically allowed the performance over which allows it's down twenty-five hundred square feet. But as our allows, because what allows small, small lot sizes is most impossible to a single family resident on a twenty-five hundred foot lot, the sets that are in our code.
You don't want any single family houses in our community, how do get there?
I think you rezone this to higher density, so it's currently loaded in there. I don't, you know, the dent action is seven on this area about the maximum for zoning.
The max density they have is eight, with this is the parcel, they had eight units.
And if I don't know, tonight we legally allowed to that.
Yes, you can know what, you can deny it.
Okay, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it complicated, and so I have lots of questions to, and I want to clear on some of my business. Thank you guys.
Other questions or comments from counsel?
I do have a question. Thanks, sir. So there have been developments that have like storm water cache systems and they've just not well designed or out count. And they spill ways, it goes across other repeat products. We've had some substantial rain last two years, atmospheric rivers in our way more often. It's like eline every few years. My question is existing storm water storage with infiltration. I'm not an engineer. My concern is where does water go? Is that this infiltration device exactly enough to handle these, like, we have only every every three or four years now.
So the entire of the system is designed where it can support Everglan. It was reviewed at this phase of the project by the city engineer and he determined that with the change in the site and then with existing design would be equipped to have both the existing project as well as the project. So we review that portion of the project at this initial planning stage for all projects.
That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I, a project that came for me when I was in the planning mission, I was like, this is a very, yeah. Even this project voted no, this project, you know. And I'm just, I'm sure I, because of that having conflict or anything, I should reuse myself and will. But I remember this project and just for this, I vote no, I do not want this project. So I just want to check with this attorney for a move for.
Sure, so I don't really see a conflict, but you can rely on that from me.
Okay.
Should a conflict challenge come for you, the only thing you never rely on is advice from the FPPC.
Okay.
Seven of them doubt south.
I'm going to sit it up because I clearly, I I have already, so, okay. Councilmember Sendus, I'm actually.
Before you leave, Mayor Stevens, I have to just say something, you do not have a conflict difference, you do not have to sit this out. Only time you have a conflict difference is when you're gonna get or found gonna gain something terribly fair. I also voted no on the project, so do I have to sit out? No, you do not have to sit it out and advise to sit it out. Again, I'm not a P P C, you can do it like, but she's attorney to tell you that, but you do not have conflicts, you vote no.
Yeah, and at the first point, I say I don't see conflict, but you can rely on me how I said that's only cap, but don't the conflict.
And I, when the attorney meets by that, it's like ultimately we're responsible for.
I understand that, I get that, I get that. Okay, okay, then I will, then I'll stay, I'll stay then. Okay, so just on, and and some concerns is going to be, I do not want project that that was very concerned to me. Sometimes I was planning mission with that, there was always to be this to have to send more houses in in areas where they were needing exemptions or things that to, I did not see benefit to the community. And I was always concerned of that and this does feel, it's kind of me running those lines, it feels the same. So I don't see what point of having come before, I don't understand why we're looking at this. I see what would be any benefit to our community. So a lot of questions about why are trying to add a few more, you know, houses and asking for some reason, you know, make that work when I I'm sure what this benefit to the community in relationship. So I'm just gonna state that's my, my opinion. I'm checking any other questions or comments from onto public. Counselor Bird, did I go?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I share similar thoughts and sentence as my colleagues here. And I'd flag for me with that project exam from inclusion, right, housing ordinance. And to me, I like, Mr. Stevens, what's benefit to the community as a whole? And for me personally, my personal opinion, the project targets higher was higher buyers or investors. And me that signals where only a few benefit rather than large community and I I can't support, thank you.
Okay, so let's go move on to comment, we have any quick card this one.
This is public green.
Sorry, so no public comment?
There are public comments.
Yeah, you have to own public green.
Opening public hearing, do you have any comments?
Did you? They don't have to.
Okay, please, um, be the podium, thank you. And let's hear it.
Mayor and members of council names, Augie Dent, and I am applicant on project. And I can respond, some of the questions have been brought up. First off, you may recall, those of you who are here and it came through first time, that there's some, I don't know if fusions that were, there was the, an interpretation of the city calculation that was made. So there, the the lot that you're seeing brought to you now, we were requested to them, A, because the way the city was calculating back two years ago. The density, since that, the density is calculated has been changed, so now put back in there. This, so this is, this really mine should have been part of the project in the first place. The smaller lots, I understand are those rather see a different kind of use here, but this, the use for this property is zoned. And the smaller lots, you might receive to family, they are, it does drive greater affordability than the homes on big lots, there's some built in affordability there. So, and as far as benefit, yeah, you know, the specific plan, this property contributed, we did wheel building brick on the on the bias, I sent to the other lots there. So and furthermore, the additional units do lend some benefit to the D for just having more, it's virtue of being units, there's more affordability. And it helps city with requirements deliver additional use according to state requirements. So I I have addressed the questions and if there are any others, be happy to try that.
Let me hear more about, you know, my, the water account, because like there, there has been, I mean, it hasn't been voiced in this place, but it hasn't likely flowing out county, certain operators have got just just rivers go through. And the sewers and that must have just been up to stuff of you and they've had to put even larger, more additional basins in certain operators. What can you also that wash storage and that infiltration system, how that helps? We keep about the atmospheric waters, we come through, you know, we've had floods just a few years ago.
Right, yes, I acknowledge that we have had some extreme weather and I expect it will continue. And so what I say, I'm not an inear, but I can say there have been inears and the hydrology inears engaged to design this with the the requirements for the surrounding area in mind. So I I believe that the the design documents and the C documents have addressed that concern. I I comment having the county and flooding, I don't kind of process it through, but I say the process that says go through is is intended to have addressed current such as.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would prefer not seeing leapfrog developments. This is apparently just open base was undeveloped previously, like definitely, I would like to see those load in a little bit. I would prefer to see like a couple of these lots, be a park, like additional one, like seeing on the other side. But I'm kind of voicing my opinion here at this point.
This is, if I, this is filling in sort of, I don't know, this is what we're putting out is filled. The rest of the project had lovely been struck, improves had been struck. And I, the idea of it being leapfrog, actually this is fill, you know, between bypass and the red the sea, it's in so-called specific area, which is intended for development such as this, that's that's the way it's zoned. So I respect fill and not leapfrog.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Morales, you have a minor question, thank you.
Question for, just if if the party is kind of checks the some of in terms of a land city, the meaning requirement, the city, because I'm like, so cities will deny something that they're complying with. We are not doing our part in terms of our housing element and what should I get of components if this is not approved and there isn't really any use with it?
So I'm gonna ask, need to use the public ring? If it's listed, I answer ring.
Were there any more? We needed seconds there more.
Okay, it's closer.
There are other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I would, Councilor Morales, this is a record for a plan development, which is discretionary. However, as Eric mentioned, it is zoned into RP, our form overlay, so there are some sessions already outlined for small lots. And the, this goes to leave to previous little bit about the reasoning for that change, because previously development approved conditional use permit wasn't necessarily appropriate. But the code kind of points to of being these exceptions under that easy reasoning. So it's a little bit of a kind of limbo zoning versus correct cross for plan development. It is discretionary, as this attorney mentioned. What happened are as house elements with certain count as new units, market units towards the housing element. And our commission, seven units on property is the max number of units that you eight building unit acre would allow. So this is apples proposed configuration meet highest city currently allowed under the zoning, but would need a completely zonal planment in order to hire that. So are there be a different design that the applicant provider might want to propose, this there and propose to that higher and see. If let's say this were redesigned, the applicant will want to assume thing, you could be looking at less unit in order to meet that strict application code in order to get something proved that doesn't require development. Any regard to development, if it was readism would come back with the council. There are kind of imputability within the development, but would need to stay at seven unit amount, even on land development of a different design without complete general redevelopment.
Thank you. And then a quick question about the fair rate scenes, we met the number already, have we not?
Well, in the fiscal, we certainly did, we are currently in a year to the cycle, so back to needing me all of the numbers.
And so this, so will this helps?
This would be six units entitled towards our great revenue.
But so like where, what do we need to meet, sorry, I said this in a way, do we, what number do we need to meet that fair rate?
I don't know, but I believe our link is about seven hundred. Our total is forty-one sixty-three and our market, I'll give it thousands, so let's, we've got two thousand plus market units included in our rough estimate, I can bet it's number you would like. But you have of the four thousand one hundred and fifty units, a second point our market.
Oh, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments, some members.
Thank you. So speaking of public here, this is probably the most passionate subject that comes for me, because over years learned a bit about this. So here's, here's what happens. This is this council now in a proof, and it tends to go political, I'm not saying that call it politics, I'm just letting know in the past, it's politics. There are things we can do, I want to with developers, I want to part with for our community. This is what we ran on, this is what we said, and we keep getting exceptions, then that keeps going for and for. And for my colleagues, just so you know, when you're having conversation like this, saying to this or that, just I disclose, I have conflict, you have a conversation with the board, it's ethical thing to do, right? Thing to disclose that a conversation with the board before you talk or at some point when you're talking about, because the public has to know that. So here are my thoughts. I don't, I disagree with the speaker about make it better for community, because never get the signed demand silently, we know that, we never will meet. What we need to do to make it equitable, more better communities, I'd like the multifamily, all multifamily or a mall conference, take those two houses in them and put a part there. We need parts, need more livable, workable spaces, but it's not gonna happen, because that's not how you make money. So I'm all compromised when it's gonna fit me and to start, we're yet to negotiate, so benefit the community and not make excuses, you scare practice. This is how the past, same colleagues are doing it now, giving is bolt to assure people and approve more houses. I know it's a snort, but decision you make long term impacts for years and years and years. It's not affordable, while there is a four house, probably by post office area, there's multi that I think of, wherever we meet are affordable or low income number. You know, if we're to make multifamily, if the upper would to port that and do that on tier, our number go up. That asks, here's where things can get a bit tricky and all spin very true and pass out this, because it affects families. People that grew up like me in Hollister that hold us with one and been ignored for years and years and years. So no, it not seem big deal, we can justify whatever we want, but does become a deal if we don't take a stand now, make sure we're building a community that's equitable, that's going to benefit the community and not the developers. Thank you.
I think you, Councilmember Sendus. Okay, any other questions or comments, we are moving, ask for a motion.
Is it possible to have the, you know, the representative come up and help us with those those parts?
I, so I think, I think what asks and recommend, Counselor Morales, is that if they come back with different design, that incorporates some suggestions that he made. I think that's what it is, yeah. So, yeah, okay, so I'm ask for motion from counsel first.
I will to deny. Yep.
And so it's fair for the card, you mean to deny interesting in ordinance and you're being to deny adoption of resolution, prove tentative, correct?
Correct.
Check all those, okay.
When it could be, if I can, Stevens, so when we, if we say yes, we're denying the project, if we say no, we're approving the project.
You're necessarily approving the project, you correct, a yes, vote no.
Deny, thank you, I think.
Yes, so is to agree with the motion. If you agree with the motion, you vote yes, if you disagree with them, then you vote no. Okay, can we do a call vote?
Vice Mayor Jay?
Yes.
Councilmember Sis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Miranda?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Most passes are one with some of Morales dissenting.
Okay, thank you. So we're getting on to next item and our next, conservative S and by direction garden, a clean, a business advisory commission, we have a staffer, please.
Yes, City Jennifer Woodward, this is in response to a request for item that came out of the council's discussion of downtown entertainment district. And so there was discussion of creating a downtown business mission and that's kind of a further turn in business advisory council. So staff is before you just raise suggestions on analysis and recommendations of all thing or titled for business advisory missions and other jurisdictions. So there are first suggestions that mission meet according to basis that it made up of members, alert to other missions are appointed. One by each, recommissions come one for each of the council and then a advisory council. It is amended based on other agencies that it be a downtown business owner. There are other recommendation that they are the coal business, so not to consult business that might have someone else for that brick order that anybody can visit. A recommendation or practice or other commissions or that it be either both city residents or businesses or could also an account up to. We do have other missions that all county residents are in this owners, you could all base the take of the kitchen members on you want and sex of a business, business directors presented such retail restaurants. So these are just the different gestures coming out of other institutions of this literature and we live to you as the council to determine what we'd like this mission to look like. Once council given direct, we can talk with the resolution or two ethic comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any comments from council members, questions? And we will come back.
I have received speaker card aside.
Oh, sweet.
You, you have to fill out, you just come on if you like.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, city council staff. So obviously, a small business owner in downtown Hollister, I very encouraged in honestly in the tough economic time, you guys sit this business commission, definitely what kinds never, I mean, far as I can tell, far as I've heard, it's not been the ideal or it hasn't considered before. The reality is, and some of you know that I served office before, so I understand both sides of the, of the fest, you know, when it comes to the policy side and ultimately the business. And this idea of a business commission is is like amazing, as I learned, especially if you thought when I just read during Quid, that you had basically like a last way to shut the economy, right? You had to milli thousand businesses go away, twenty thousand, I'll never come back. So this idea of a business commission creates opportunity for the business to be drivers. And then advisory granted, because the, you know, argue they are policy makers, right? They do that in the world's business owners, right? Know standards to set from payroll to management staff to ultimately set budget. And ultimately, we're the that are dealing with the implications of a of a economy and it's inefficient, unstable markets. I mean, even you're dealing with the regulatory, the bears of every in a small town, you know, it's really hard for a business community. So we have any other ideas, know that, you know, it's a lot to unite the business community for them to actually talk, provide kind of guidance. Think since you are definitely said, I think, omnipresent, that the business community comes the ones that actually give really good input, give you, and I what policy you can set to more efficiencies, to get more opportunity to drive more traffic, the consumer, you know, basically consumers to grow. So we're super appreciative, we talking, all of us, this is obviously, and thank you to city manager, to the mayor, to talking with us and ultimately being given an ear. At the end of the day, this business commission can come up some amazing things, all we've seen, the issues we've had with their business closed just recently, the idea ultimately prevent that. We want to be the ones that are just preserving our own business interests, providing the interest of all business community, I mean, really, and really to the for one other and try to create a driving economy in a small town. That's really what I think this is our, this is a start to that happen. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, council considering and staff, you know, in help, thank you.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate that, the comments, other what comments?
No other comments.
Okay, close up pub comment section, so any other questions, comments, Counselor Sendus ahead?
Thank you, Stevens, yeah, I 100% agree with Peter on what the, I think the city all serves to partner authentic with our businesses. We are, we've got a number of issues that are going to promote economic development and really need partner with them and ensure that already has the tape, so we want your input. So thank to O R for helping with that, thank the city manager, thank business that have been meeting recently. The one I'm going to question. Uh, one time going to question, well, let's, we're headed towards some rough fights, just like businesses are. Uh, public sector, you'll hear more of that tonight. So, um, I am hoping that business owners that you'll partner with and knowing that financially would be a bit limited on what can and can't do. I think the idea was to get everybody at the table together so that we have an conversation open because business owners are very creative. See what ideas out of going that both the citizen policy and business. But please be mindful of that. The other thing I would say is that it's a commission, just like all new missions, we're going to be humping that we're flexible, you're flexible, if need pivot and change the makeup or anything as far as that goes. Just keep in mind, um, if my recommendations would be, I don't, my biggest recommendation would be like the equally and especially can have special. Um, just again, because a new mission, I don't know what the recommendation was, but that's what we're all kind of pushing pulling back doing mostly because of time I'll be honest with you. And because of other things we've gotten on, that would be my recommendation. And the other recommendation we had talked about was making sure that it's not just a good order, but they actively generate self tax rep beginning that which the, um, bios are what we're doing that actually generate self tech rep for this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council member send us. Other, um, comment questions, uh, Council Morales.
I do, um, the idea of having each of us, um, put select somebody to miss you a lot of businesses there. I know in town, many does it also. It would be so be able to, um, have applications to be able to make sure that the diversity of city is presented.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin Morales advice. Let's mayor go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, so it's been said that all change, especially positive gain, uh, comes to small group committed individuals added around common cause. And you couple that with, I feel like government isn't always the answer. I feel like it sometimes gets in the way almost. Um, really, I'm excited about this since advisory mission. And you think about some group of committed individuals united on a common cause. I think we get more done through a group than with a group like this because they're in tune with business committee. Right, we're here, we can all say some of them are really tough, take a lot of time and we know a lot of reading this information. These businesses, you know, you're almost like four S I U, right? In the business community. So I'm I'm excited about this night that if the representatives we get into the businesses of town and make better decisions with this advisor mission. So I think this is crazy.
Okay, so yeah, I agree. And, um, so, uh, I do have to say some thanks to, um, to her news who just spoke, need to go. Um, some member send us, um, Omar Ross, that's for the downtown host or associate. We went really closely into a lot in the early months of my, um, period there, sorry there. We started getting to some of the downtown system, so our customers were there. And then started talking about some of the challenges of local business city and as this community to enhance economic development, help, um, new business bin and expand. So it was really what this didn't start. And through this, I think it was a coordination of council member send it, Mr. Hernandez and the idea of a cushion, uh, it was born. It was out of that. I did a little bit of research and just try to find other objection in the state that was business condition. I got one, however, there are other cities that have other committees, council committees that have different, had essence function at a biz commission. So they do this as, I mean, they want to, um, they started as downtown focus or something. So they different names and so they they all into what we're trying to hear. But I could not find one that was specific to this question. So Fernando is right, there's going to be a very, very new thing that we're going to create. What that means, first of all, it's because we creating new, hopefully something can some positive change of the business community. But also it's never quite a lot of patients as we want to work out key to really name is what is purpose of this, um, commission and what is it or an accomplish? My hope is that this mission can do is that it will help city to create policies to impact, um, internal operation with some suggestions. So that ultimately this is community can thrive, so that ultimately city, that the city of Holland and I'm talking about arguments possible through. So that ultimately that is the goal, right? So all coming together. I think that, um, elevate voice of of this is committee in a full way like a kitchen helps to do that. And I also think it will help to unify those different, um, uh, hard work, great this commission, um, I'm sorry, business organizations that already exist. Um, I think will help bring people together and help you truly to impact all of that wholly will serve economic development. So it's the goal. Uh, I, I, I like the idea of putting something on sales, tax, generated business, something somewhat like that inner. So I think that's important. I want to make sure there is a piece of that layer that we may decide to tip, but I, because it's the only folks right now that we like small business. Cause I think that is really the main focus. At least now that change later, I think for now, I think focus should be small. This is not to say we not have a business rep, but I think there should are your, so maybe the majority of the mission or represent by business or something to that. And, uh, and so I that we highlight our downtown. So I like saying about at least one or two, uh, versus plastic from the downtown, something like that. So I don't know exactly what's number, but this is a thing to that fact. I also think that, uh, we need, we need to see how we avoid these issues in a different way. We appoint other, uh, individuals, other teams because we can't rely on what somebody lives in this district because that's the folks, right? So council member can elect individual, I think, to be a visitor and meet other criteria. And I think it does matter where in the city it is. That's that's my opinion. This is a different type of commission. So I'd some good stats. I'm hoping that that my fellow council members can agree with on the case that small business will highlight that downtown that we're recognizing, um, to bits that business owners, not necessarily where you live, but that there's owners and that, uh, there's some business on some business in there. So that's why would the folks to be. So I'd like, um, from the red, my team members, see what do you need about those ideas? Council member send us.
Thank you, Stephen. 100% agree with you. Think, um, the part that about posting on some business is really important. We always change things later. So focusing on business, I think at least one downtown business, because we know it doesn't, it doesn't prejudice adding more than just one, right? Making the requirement, I said, great idea and everything else you said, I present, thank you.
Thank you. Other other comments, questions?
I, I, especially in the part now, you know, potentially improving government operation, making it easier to do business in this town, potentially purring and figuring out a make process here. Cause, um, if this mission is, you know, staying tuned with businesses, they're probably going to hear, um, look for evas that that I hear. It's pretty hard, uh, to start a this here. Know what inventory making it hard. I know you have hard working people that work every day to ensure that permits wow. Um, uh, but you know, I think can probably do a better topic, communicating some aspects of what going on. Um, this advisory command could be, you know, kind of street aim almost, right? The downtown, we don't have enough, me myself there a little bit, but, um, you know, the manner of the run on the street to kind of get, get the, the beat, see what's going on and help us make decisions. Help maybe spread of good, you know, planning and writing, you know, is is doing, you know? Cause we need to hear a lot of bad, maybe there's good going down too.
Thank you, Senator. Come over, let's go.
Yes, wondering, uh, if I've proven commission, but we do have, we do have a business city of Hollister. Um, some of our with, uh, a biz council with the neighbor and through membership. So no, if we're all thinking about who presented from those organizations, um, just try to see how we can play business voice.
And and I might have had a conversation, an optimization with the city manager about the like in that same effect. And so I think, I think the best way is to focus on business owners, is for this iteration of maybe change later. However, it is so like to say, Mar says, for example, from downtown city, we might do what we're going to ask him to be here to be in support the kitchen and provide chamber from the, the biz council. From biz related organizations, maybe to be present, um, and them to be present, maybe in audience and hear to send and maybe to the voices of their group. I think that my preference would be not to have on the commission to really reserve those seats for biz owners. Um, and invite to be a part of the process discussion, maybe include or invite to come to the media that there's in the auditorium there as, uh, of these third groups to represent. That's what I'm getting is that would be a good way to ensure that we will change that. I think for now, I really, really want to highlight the focus seats and reserved for, uh, biz owners. And it's that's my thought. Um, so I do want to, I want to follow a little on the, this, uh, point that you made, uh, vice about permitting system. Here's the thing we have to be a little careful about. This is what we're going to really need support on. We want to make sure that we're not duplicating or in any kind of conflict with the responsibilities of the planning, right? Their process. And so we want to be very careful that not overstepping. Let's make sure that if we are, if we are putting together parameters, responsibilities, uh, the, uh, role of this mission, that it's the clear delineation between the role of this cushion and planning mission, that there is an, um, overlap. Uh, I think it's okay to work in partnership, commission work in partnership, so they're supporting each other. I don't want to get a recommendation from one commission on something that is a permit requirement and we get thing from the, from the plan mission that is into conflict. I just want to really care about that. I I'm going to leave that to city manager, others who advise us that, but I want to make that we kind of put out there, we're careful. Go ahead, city man.
Yeah, we'd certainly look at it in the staff report that would suggest they, you know, help staff to be in with us. Reason went there, they're actually paid contractors, kind of keep the finger pole, help with town activities. So it seemed kind of playing out, you know, maybe, uh, Mr. is sitting up here, you know, with me can give feedback. And given of a perspective of hearing, it would be a vote member or the mission. Um, so that was the thought process behind that is that, uh, we are funding them, provide that intel that source to us and it would be a fair. And I would just say, um, if you want to focus on small business, us is staff, the definition. And so if that's, you know, you know, a number of staff members, um, you know, I probably wouldn't get into revenue, that type of thing. We don't have business have to listen to book to be on the commission. It could something with a business employees are less or five less, you know, you'll see other communities, 25 or 50, I think in the C that may be, uh, quite large, small business, a lot of businesses that have. Want a limited number or a prescribed number that at minimum have to have small businesses. We could back suggestions of how to get there small because we have to review the occasions against what a small business is, so what a definition then it is.
Good, thank you for that. Uh, come over this, go ahead.
Thank you. Think like this show like is any, be the head or two fifth place.
Yeah, I think we're going to create our own, because I think the, that the show is big, it's too big for our, the businesses that we focus, I think a number around 15 might be the right number. Uh, but if we go with the business administration finds this business is going to be for us, it's going to be. So let's I think we create our own definition and I think, I mean, I think 10 or 15, I'll be the number.
They can back options and guess they could just back options.
So, uh, so this is what I'm going to say to to our person, please back, give us your suggestion. We're so what will happen is we're there, uh, draft, um, and then we'll have, um, number in there. And then maybe you you get advice for you, uh, what's the number for like our city is is 15 too little, 25 too much. So maybe we'll get some sessions for our business owners and we'll put it in there. I I'd like to do, but I think the saying when the official definition probably good, we create our own for, we think right for holiday, I think be better.
Quick, thank you. Um, as far as nine to seven, we're having a hard time just getting type people sometimes in permission. I would like starting with five. And other thought I admit is that, um, I think we've done the past, I remember when starting a new company, they create mission, they can create their budget back to us and we adopt it. And I'd like, and I see this very chicken. So I would, that'd be the first they shoe.
Yeah. Well, I, okay, yeah, I think we have to at least a more, right? So some like frames so that gets it. And I so that we can, uh, if we want to focus in on a small business, I think having definitely will be really important. And then I think that's that's what do it to allow them to create, be heavily involved in creation. I think you have to, so with some kind of lease framework, I think we start.
Absolutely, you don't just shoot moon in the earth.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so I, I, okay, we we kind of a lot, but I can check with, we okay with with the direction given.
So I can give some what I have in the term of their sense.
Thank you.
So the first was that the committee quarter. Yes.
And put that in there and then have you put that.
So this is for the to come to council, for them to meet clearly that the members who own this that great sales revenue to the city that would be proposed if I were coming with each member of council, um, commend member of the community, but it would hire a full of the council, how we do our ones. Um, membership party be given to small biz owner at least one member of the commission of a biz located downtown area. And then the purpose being, uh, suggested point is to enhance economic development in the city. Has city get policies to pack internal operations, the biz community thrive. And then also noting that they're not going to duplicate responsibilities of that income without over. The one question I have is the council want to give to on it right now is you sit priority, small biz owner, do you want to have any sort of number on that of one, two? Or if you want to leave that open, because you always at least one, then you can.
I I think I would start with majority, majority small. I I see I prefer to have all small businesses start, I think we just majority that we would, that's what I'm getting, what rest of the majority, small biz owners.
I think all.
Like all, what do?
I'm for the majority at least because I've already two of being or two that have kind of been the purseness. There have been at least three submitted small business owners that have some more here.
Uh, go, okay. Uh, so did you have thing?
Yeah, I've from at least in my area, we have businesses, I'm not sure. I have a friend like era, so I have like all the, all the shops and the supermarkets have issued like finances at the shopping cart. So, um, I don't think qualified small business, um, might because there are everything we have, because here we have our small terms of our fees. But I think that, um, they have similar issue like policy and offices impact business. So except the one representative that that it's slightly metric, that they have a lot of.
Maybe if we did jury, would that would would suffice like already with three, S three members will have to be small business. And then have these two that still small business or or you know, they get a little bigger, like grocery store.
Yeah. And and I think a lot of the industry like era, they had hard opening, a lot of this communication. So I that all needs someone to play some point.
Yeah, yeah.
My ears are highly busy on the community.
Right, right. Okay, good. Yeah, okay. So I think we go with majority and again, this is all was the start point, we change that. Any other any comments, sense of site, the comments? Council member, you haven't anything?
I just want to say that I'm excited. This is either great ways, new fresh ideas, way to get people, new network and, you know, the business owners together and get the city ball and I think it's great, a tailored community, uh, and to generate new ideas, especially focus on generating economical growth, which is something that we need here. Um, so I'm excited. Yes, that's.
Okay, so I think I do, we just thumbs up once.
You should consider, yeah.
Okay, so with the public, uh, call a meeting, we come back to this. I again, uh, with the draft and we'll done to it ends. Just want to thank you to all small business owners have met me, have met, uh, Council Bird, uh, it's all thanks to Omar Ross from downtown, uh, association. He's an incredible and being us to, you know, just partner with our biz owners and and thank you all the gentlemen that are here in the room that's one of the owners that met with us. Thank you all. We're going to move to our next item.
Okay, it's me again. So next item is about also and is about what we want to do with our advisory body. So part of this conversation that come up a couple of different times is we handle our advisory bodies. Uh, so wanted to come have some recommendations out to them as come send us that sometime a hard getting members of advisory bodies. So I have some different gesture for you. So going through current one, have our recent recognition committed to five or come in. Um, the main appointments to Lake County meets monthly and the current two vacancies. Our culture mission is a seven member commission with two youth members also meets monthly, but there are only four vacancies and both youth, um, met position are vacant. The committee is a five member commission, it is members are age 12, 18, it's monthly, all positions currently vacant, one pending application. The historic sources come in, uh, this one has lots of requirements and so it's a five or commit and you can see the requirements there is supposedly, but it's never actually been being. All positions currently vacant and do not believe anyone has ever applied since I've been here last half year and no one has been appointed to that one. So with this, uh, we have some direct commissions of two, it's current commissions, um, one being to combine the three conditions to record and call in the youth and into a single advisory body. That could continue to have a member mission if you wanted to continue having that youth base in there and additional accommodations outlined in that for. I recommend on setting the historic resource commission, sorry, I'm typed there. Um, as I said, no one has a point to it and many of the various roles and responsibilities have turned over to the plan mission, absent that historic resource mission. And during COVID, there was disaster council created and so with the end of that emergency, we do commit going ahead and, um, setting that disaster council. And then the final comment on there is to date the area advisory mission, your meetings go to quarterly. I would recommend that all of the vice commission, other than probably plan commission, meet quarterly. At the understanding that a split meeting be called a time one is dead, but we it makes hard to recruit for commission when you're constantly having cancelings, because maybe there's business for them that is needed at point in time. I at my previous agency, we had a, a committee at every body, they met three times a year, but they knew the reason the year where it's going to happen was very sickle based on budget. And so they planned for this kind of combo that often in being, you know, of a firm because they have members and having this does make it harder for to recruit for. So those are the different recommendations and I'm open to your suggestions. If, uh, directors give to, um, move these recommendations, we'll break a different resolution. Future element, also we wait to a municipal do set that has a resource commitment, that one would require and it's draft and it's was in it in jacket. All I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Jeff, for, okay. So some questions, some comments? Do you have a comment, councilor send us go.
Yes, thank you for doing this. Um, since I have is like, I really want to honor all the friends aspect of the commissions, right? So I want to make that we are still permanent, we're still creating some, um, that we're still involving youth. Um, so I just feel that we honor, my other concern, I'm going to be honest with you, is have some busy on planning mission. And there I don't want to, I first that want to volunteer and want to involve. I think the one way can potentially do that is to set the interest. Because you don't have to literally just have a planning, like I know I need planning, I need a planning mission. If there is somebody that's currently arts culture or person that wants to be a planning commander, mind you, they, we get to pick who they are. Um, that they be that opportunity when we do this decision. If you only left five people after that, including youth member, then let's a figure four number move forward. But if have more than like, then let's accept, but can do later, like I talked about earlier, you can always, I can read that and go seven type in transgeneal bid. Does that sense?
So you're saying it would flex number decides. I would have looked at the determination of the firm. And so if you say it's a fiber, then you have a three versus seven verse. So I think.
I think, correct me wrong. I think saying is that if you if you're going to collapse these commissions into unpopular, that we're talking about, there may be some appointments that we've already made that won't need them for those committees. So then and we ask them to express their interest and if after we do that, we find there is a lot of interest, we let that bust term of their issue of five or seven.
Yes, so since, so being on the side that wanted to create that new cushion, clearly enough, you can see no one be removed from commission, we could all talk with all of those cushioners, A. Is their interest surveying on one of the other committees, either maybe this mine one, because honestly, want to make sure they wanna come on this new mission, maybe they're not interested.
Thank you, both of them, so I I hope they would.
Yeah, we would talk them.
Okay, but is but would be okay for us to determine number later, I could do, right? Once I what the crisis, okay, Mary.
You can, you can update the number.
Okay.
If if can just ask the for clarification of what I think I heard. So if you just send members, nobody, everybody can transition on, so you two people would just transition on to it. There it's not like three people are left Nicole, because there's so many pots.
That's correct.
And they're all filled, have enough vacancies where if you buy them all, you still have some quite, or you'd be right.
Correct, need to look at the use, if however wanna handle that, if you want to retire this membership and so need to come back with the design option for you for for some of these different changes. So that'd be a further conversation for council.
Yeah, I I having a little, having this in the youth, I I've worked with the youth advisor board and it's always challenging because of all, um, you know, the requirement being a youth don't last very long, because you cease to use for a few years. So it's a challenge, it's always trying to keep this up. So maybe need to put more thought on youth, like I think it's important to that, especially we have an appointment, right? We wanna make sure they take advantage of.
And here if 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 it just add to the youth piece, currently on youth, twelve to eighteen, twelve is very young. And eighteen, normally what happened, like I built group, the last group like worked with got a room together, or could meet, because one of always had them go on. And then we could all meet, except college moved. So what you see other programs is usually like sixteen to twenty or sixteen, twenty one, where that age range is a little, you know, they're very young adults.
Young adults, they weren't, they recently are, very recently, yeah.
Correct, so and that may give you a little bit more commitment and, you know, widen it a bit. As as, you know, if you have twelve year up here, that, you know, work with the parents well, there's a whole process there and, um, so would just say that if if I'm hearing that, yeah, there's a strong desire to have the union there. One wouldn't get this by switching the age up a little, which is a lot, so service brand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good, okay, um, go ahead, some of this.
Thank you, so a couple, I know it was part of the schedule as far as like goal schedule and that type of, you can also not be member, just we do with environmental. And then their thought, oh, for the time I have Spanish theme, um, missions would really love to see at least one or both, what we're planning commission. But I I wanna stress that I think it's up to have, I think it's part of have Spanish team resident for provide the relations versus them and be close of that. So wouldn't encourage Spanish theme, is it apply for a commission and, um, keep, keep that decide, need presentation, need including, so I had to see more of them.
Okay, um, okay, um, other case, I had, I had another question, not not like kidding, other questions or comments? This is, okay, so we are gonna speaker in this side.
I do have any speak on that.
Okay, so I'm gonna post pub comment, okay, so for this immune direction, right?
So, yes, that's correct, so we just through the line with CS, they wanna go ahead and unset disaster council. Okay, bring some back on that, uh, how about the historic sources mission? Set that, okay, bring introduction of an ordinance for that one. Uh, then how advise mission, you wanna move from monthly quarterly?
I think so, okay.
Okay, and finally, the consolidation of the various commissions, parts and records and call and you commission a single mission. So we can get resolution for the order options for that, um, currently talking to those together, I can have conversation with the member of the missions to see if anyone is to continue to serve, confirm that. And then bring back options for you members, um, and also, would you want commission meet quarterly or monthly?
Okay.
For that, do you have reference at this point we included, I can but as an odd of month or quarter for that kind of command?
We have enough, um, like on the gen for those, you know, to take even a month.
At this point, it's not really, again, I would recommend quarterly for all of them, but mission, especially.
Recommending, especially if you have enough content, it's kind of a, it it makes it less rewarding to participate. So then get people stop participating and there's not a grom and people that are into it, then end up not going, because they tried last time someone else comes, go quarterly, unpack meetings. And then some pop that needs addressed, you call special.
So we're back, um, the residents and then bring back their option to that committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on with the next, we're gonna continue on with discussion regarding regulatory form, maybe alternatives and all this, E at a new occasion of seventeen eighty five San Flito Road, so we get a report, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Maria, I'm the business manager, the item for you tonight is for consideration of Monreal alternative medicine. They are requesting a renewal of the regulatory bid with a post of change in location. So a little bit of overview on the business, the, uh, the app received approval back in twenty eighteen under a competitive process where there was application receipt. Monterey alternative medicine has received six new, um, their location of seven thirty three San Flito Road, where I have not opened business today. The location is, uh, initially the plan there was to rehabilitate the building, um, following the approval in the city council. Um, she after that, um, it was demolished and they seeked a goal for, uh, reconstruction of building where they were planning to approve in twenty eighteen. Um, bringing the losses, uh, Monterey alternative, uh, did obtain a build permit, which led to their permit to expire, their additional permits and approvals. I, yeah, sorry, uh, picture before you tonight is a location where they received the original proof in twenty eighteen, which happens three sleep bar. That's the raise for the renewal on occasion, uh, for this entry is relocate seventeen eighty five San Flito Road, unimproved, an oval, and it hosts two accounts regularly permitted. Which hold division, manufacturing, our hill by a service. The property has more co-illusions, and the owner respond for, I think the next, that's the the, uh, relocation, seventeen five, uh, accidentally since. So for the new location, uh, according to the of municipal code, uh, location is a, uh, reverse council approval. Um, and the attorney office recommended to consider location just by the of nights, uh, a per ordeal. If a purple sign seek additional approvals to be optional, and if it's denied, this council must make specifications denied. Excuse me, findings for the city council to consider, uh, night is again honorary, uh, Monterey alternative medicine, we could inbound. Hold enough to spend these for the last seven years, and if fit to establish an optional business in three and three of sir. City has received no can sales access from applicant, uh, this has received a lot of events from other potential Spencer operators, but considered due to permit limitations of all two dispensaries. The current location of seven seventy three holds no entitlements and, um, the current location has compliance issues. Every ended for approval tonight, uh, staff is suggesting suggesting that the dispensary operations, uh, commence with one year. Uh, all the violation violations, the new location seventeen five, sleep road, most correct by number four of two twenty five. And permit will be recalled cost according to section five point five forty two twenty of city of municipal code. In that all construction related activities to construction might imply the political costs and of selfies and acts associated with dispens operations are paid in full and on time. Then this, uh, is quest the council to consider to approve or deny the renewal for Monterey alternative medicine, the new location seventeen eighty five San Flito Road. To prove the conditions or deny consideration of specified meaning, uh, and staff be coming up with a resolution in June, second of twenty five, it's really me. I'm able to answer questions.
Okay, thank you for that, several, um, questions, that's just, I'm gonna make this by there.
Um, well, I'm struggling with this, I mean, no, I'm going around the concept cannabis is actually an alternative medicine, like people are really using it for Russian and, um, you know, just various, you know, back four, what, that we'll get the PSD, like it's a total sin. But I'm looking at them like seven years, a long time, I mean, a young person, a Jesuit priest that if you owe me a thousand, I'll show you, man, that means at seven old, you're kind of the person that you're gonna be. It's long, twenty teens, it's like a really long time ago, sometimes looking through movies and I'm, God, these movies twenty teens, I don't even know if I'll watch that. But it's been a really long, I I don't know if this for, uh, uh, manner, but you look the other spectrum and it's probably galling up all of the available business in space. But like, if you were to just throw a number, now we're tough time when it goes to new, right? You got a bold revenue, we cut expenses, we do both of them fast, who'd have liked it in the last seven years? You just kinda take both of like sneak percent, right? So one didn't have a hundred percent, took a look down, does that mean like, does it got sneak percent? Like if you were just throw a number, like what could we have gotten in the autumn, or snow in like four years?
So I would be speculating, and I'll explain why I would speculate, and have to also be careful, because I am a permit give tax for me out publicly. And being that there's only one of one, by nature, I would be giving information out.
Right, okay.
So the other thing that makes it default is that you don't know if another spender is here, prices don't come down, it's the customer base.
Right.
It's a lot of moving factors, but for seven years, all considered, you have seen seven years of of revenue into the city. Various sales tax, kind of tax, types of different taxes, but overall, it could be the same exact amount, because half people do the other one, and the prices are all the, it's just expected on that.
And then great job, was it Maria on that staff report? Uh, you said for other, um, applicants, I mean, clearly we had eight, we could go with two, eight or ounces. Um, so for seven years, we have an action, uh, have your, uh, potential operators that would like to fill base?
Yes.
Okay, would you say it's been odd action, or maybe would you say?
Would say yes, has been, um, packed just last week, there was a call, um, but they sort of is this, they've been awarded both of them. And they, uh, they've asked what it takes for them to come in, request that the city council, uh, up number, dispensary, or or do, uh, I guess it's conolive that our dispensary is not open for business, so they wonder what's going.
Thanks, there's activity there.
Yeah.
That's all I've got for now, I'd take from.
Yeah, um, yeah, we're gonna public it, yeah, I'm just gonna, okay, let go to pub comment and we'll, uh, come back more comments.
Yes, our speaker is Bryce Berza.
Thanks for that, I need to talk tonight, I'm I'm a board member of MAM, Monterey, B, and Alistair. Um, a little context, we were one, uh, two against the reward through a high competitive system in twenty eighteen at that time, and still currently that he is owning that a lot of this retail is incredibly stringent. It's very hard to find a space with the city meets zoning environments with set worth and ordinance. And so it been a chance since that time, city was aware that the location that would apply at what they get location would have taken a few years and substantial implement, get to a spot to have a favorable facility. Uh, at the valuation, we had investment, uh, we had applied for bill permits for moving mine and this crazy will pandemic happened, essentially smacked the economy in the sense that we had to forward about three years. So that caused a significant stall and, uh, hurt in our plan. During time, we maintained positive, uh, status, city, we filed for renewal a year, paid our couple of, um, a couple of years ago, we knew that, uh, fortunately, that wasn't going to be usable anymore. And so we started to certain annulation, uh, which in the current zoning very challenging, uh, eight months ago, we identified a pseudo location. Uh, this year, um, it's about exactly a year, uh, we had started to apply and work with staff to move seventeen eighty five and fully road. Uh, we applied for conditionalist permits in September, um, Missendez had a couple of things that he asked for to respond with, and we submitted anything in full in November. We waiting for over six months for the opportunity to come to come before you, uh, have this conversation and to get a bolt to move new location. Um, while the locations had some co-illusions, um, we're only informed yesterday that it's listed as a seat ten location in the deck that's had mobile tenants, include fascin previously, as well as, uh, there are companies for crop production services operating there at the same time. Uh, currently, there's two a can of business there that are limited, don't have anything to do with that. Uh, our location is E one, the bill code violations are for, uh, and it called L, located by use A and B. Uh, so our unit actually is unimproved, uh, is full painted and passed fire inspection, has cameras that have fire, it has security, uh, because it was titled manufacturing. So so the part of the dispensary we can go is, uh, the section of the manufacturing facility includes lobby and is our retail, uh, there's not a lot of improvement, they're ready to make, uh, and with approval, participate, be able to get open operable very quickly. We will pull a permit and get an award, is obvious to do so, there's a lot of structure going on. Uh, you have an issue that I shared with, um, after, you have a few, one of the recommendations had attached the violations to our end of intent for us, don't have the ability to resolve co-illusions with their tests. And so I guess that you had been motion and recommend the motion before you land would apply, uh, to separate the unit legally, so thank you for your time, I will leave any comments.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you.
The next speaker is Victor Guss.
Okay.
Honorable, yes, we can. Okay, uh, good to you for tonight, you for, uh, for your work, I appreciate it. Uh, again, Ms. Victor Guss with strategy, I represent, uh, Monterey alternative medicine, um, brush here as well. I think kind of now exactly we've gone to in that, um, I owe, we brought the permit for renewal, um, a little bit over a year ago, uh, we were gonna get some bids, fortunately, they all came extremely high for the existing. I, what's debated, so this side, because price had, um, had entrance pretty, uh, ship pretty, like opening or quicker opening when you get through the, um, ten year process. So your winter timeline should work totally fine if you're aiming that and you're, uh, want to approve and also again, uh, this product forward, uh, we certainly, uh, understand the per that word. And, uh, you want to accomplish it, or, uh, again, we that execute, so happening, if there any question you may have, as I said, you're available as well answering question, but, uh, we hope you can come here, so we will get in place, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gomez, um, there comments?
For no speaker.
Okay, so we're closing up the comments, and so, um, then just go to.
Thank you, this, this is, it's really disappointing on us with, I've seen this move on replay since the time I elected some years ago in this. And during that time, we're losing on tax revenue, uh, the city of Alistair, residents utilize service are not able to get it, and we've got one other permit that's mobilizing me. Confidence is good, I want to port businesses, I want to source revenue, pay me to say I can't behind this, um, because I want to set seed. It, but here are my, here are my concerns, like I've seen this again and for seven years, and now we're being asked for another year. What's happened is with a year, we could like get raised and then sweat, I don't know, everybody through COVID, you know, uh, we had a bit that went through COVID, I got it, so it means need to be able to support this. So I'm hearing anything like specific other than give us another year, and then all the other rules that gotta get to get there. So if I were support this months, but I'm not seeing that tonight, um, I didn't even see it from the Sultan, but I appreciate you guys being here. Uh, really taught me to to not support this, but you've actually had till June, right? And I cannot give another mention because of reason, I'm sorry.
Okay, few comments, you have a question, comment, okay.
So, I mean, everybody in business, you know, can you work in your plan, right? So what I, is it possible that we ask, we rant like the month, uh, extension, and in that three months, we get business plan because the building is part of plan? Uh, I don't know which, but I did, I'm gonna think, assume it's the three door kind of situation on the north kind of west side of the building that you'd be, I think it was, I think it's more on the on the east side. But, uh, can we do like a three month extension, three months just to the plan, right? And then go from there? Is that a possibility? We have to do for one year, and then like a year, we're gonna go to immediate, you know, unenable, um, link with these on the.
Yeah, I would probably link on the Sutern, typically that approval, it's annual, so if granting three months annual permit, that may create challenges as well.
Yeah, that could be, it is annual, um, and wait, it's where you add cushions approval, but it's what your code states, which is annual permit. Could you do a month extension to the current?
I see where your code allows for extensions, I was just looking at it.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, anything, um, council?
Man, we, I don't know, I just get we had seven years, I'm in the pandemic, everything on pause, um, so tonight I'd like to hear like the plan that we had seven years to come up, right? Um, and that's, that's what we would need, and Italy, we had the pandemic, you could have gotten a four degree, and I'm not finished with that time, I remember it was before that, but yeah, we had plenty of time.
I'm coming around, go ahead.
Only I'm not in fear of 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 anything ridiculous, um, think however, I do understand, because a lot of businesses went through, like, the struggle of of getting business open, do have a lot of challenges in the city and ready to committing, um, code, they have an impact. No, I there be pro, uh, from what I heard, they're proactive in terms of finding a location, upbringing, the units to be able to, now seven years, when you're looking at some struggling and kind of, you're out of way to do optional with your business, and yours, lots of them as well, and so. So I think I would be more standing at one year. And seeing if able to do.
Thank you, um, thank you, Ms. Morales, um, okay, I'm not sure if this question, if I wanna direct to Mr. Gomez, uh, consent, or wanna ask the biz owner. But I I kind of like feeling the same, I'm having the same react reaction, I I worried because it is really frightening, I remember was on the pink, I mean, this was something that came up, that was more than four years ago. And it's like, well, haven't opened it, and then the pandemic, and then, uh, and all this other stuff has happened. So when, um, we heard that it was still out there, just in a plane, and everybody was using it, it's like, why are you not, why are not, so I I personally would be, I feel more comfortable getting behind this extension and, and business owner, Ms. Gomez, um, please, to the, uh, can you respond to that? Can you get specific about how, as we are, how you plan to make this happen with that bit of time, like if we don't have something that's more specific, then it may get nice. I I'd like to be assured is, what is it that you expect, that, how do you think you can do this? It's why we, this, we all want to open, we all really want to open, so you please just open, like what you to do to take it open. And we know there's others that are ready to step in, we'd like to give them the opportunity, and if you aren't able to do it, then it scares enough for you to do it, but we really want some business. And so can you also go and please tell us how you plan to do this and give us mistakes, maybe miss the work that in that we can, uh, we can, uh, Ted?
Um, you know, we're more optimistic that we're at the opportunity to have the conversation a month ago, and, um, on our two leading factors, as it stands right now, is the condition that you guys approved is gonna tie our, in our permit to co-illusions, something that's outside our control, because that's gonna force us to move forward. We're just get the, um, code violation that have nothing to do with us, right? It's one, uh, second limiting factor, just the ability of staff to communicate and work with us in expedition or, um, we're ready to go, our furniture has already been done fabricated, uh, this is just repaint, um, the security cameras are, as I said, a great proof for those manufacturers. Air has been written, they were two weeks ago, resurfaced, the springers, police been through and authorized it, wanna come get, I'm sure for particular use, but this is TI, I need apply for nine permit, um, we're ready to go. So, you know, anxious to get away, uh, we an operational plan, with the fun, get going, um, furniture fixture equipment already built, so, uh, you know, we just need approval, we've been waiting that since November, it's perfectly, so, um, I I totally, I'm on your pressure, and no, we were afraid to leave me, we just need opportunity to come in and I, and we're ready to be a business community, create tactics, and just.
Can I, um, kind of like, um, I, I'm really, I just like I to do is like, trust, certify, that kind of, can I get, can anybody to do, uh, of staff that that tells exactly what they mean, that that's what they needed to to open, they need permit, and that this addition, if we ask for those condition, that that will help, and some from staff, ask that question, the count that act, that's something that, that make this forward.
Yeah, and before, um, the assistant venture, I make a recommendation that if you're gonna, uh, break, you're gonna give reaction to bring back for prove that part of that be that apply, follow admitting guidance, including the times.
Okay, okay, this proposed mission is about their specific and and excluding others, and so is that, and then I wanna make sure what he is actually, that there is some permitting stuff, and then really all that left to balance, you let us that.
So apparently, this is not a multi-unit property, it's not having time, so that is a process that is pretty neat to go through. So that is part of this, uh, although there have been, uh, granted presented with different units and and it's been broken out, um, it is not an idle, um, segregation of its own property at point, so it does have to go that process. You can see from the pictures, there is significant site proofs that need made, exterior is apartment, signage, there's a number of things there. So according to municipal code, code violations are applicable to site, not segregable, um, thing, so it is true that this, the property owners would violate and needs to rectify it and would hope embed work him, potentially to take of that. Has already with the building department, he is working on violations, so there's some actionable pieces there. But I do wanna say that in making this recommendation, condition of approval, we consider history, the, um, business in move forward, and thought that we need to implement, um, actionable rates and and pieces, so you would have results, because we knew you had this result, you wanted to have a clear perspective of this property represented and could forward. So we feel that the condition of approval we put in are achievable, but they have a lot of work to do. Also, for the timing, you wanna go consider all of these symptoms.
Okay, 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 thank you for that, appreciate, appreciate that, okay, um, go to council member.
Question first, how long ago detained this new building?
Maria, could they come that little better than I can, explain things about the building?
Yeah, the thing, I definitely the new new application or, uh, the new application, uh, back in August, of of last.
Okay, they said the building is ready to go, do you know the tent, I've actually made this improvements, or are they just using this improvement from the previous business that was there?
Um, so I'd reached out to the applicant, I saved the occasion, because all I got in their application was, uh, rendering, and I wouldn't know, but it looked like a business plan, um, usual get, born after, um, with this, I with them, I didn't read that, so I reached out and basically, what the applicant recently was, we're just going to affect, uh, just when it work in paint.
So what I'm hearing is this, they turned a lease agreement with landlord that already had the improvements, they're hoping to move in there, but there's other things that are tied that pretty that they to resolve before they can opt. The only investment in my opinion that I've heard tonight from the biz owner, they furniture in this way, that's it, so they had done a tenant improvement, they just feel we just keep going around in circle. And I just still think it's fair to community, to others, and to ourselves, to ourselves, tax revenue, so, um, I'm not as opposed, I'll be honest, because I just, I've been down the road with that against for a number of years. But if the majority of my colleagues do, um, support this, and again, but the, that would give at least a lot of protection that they're not in the, uh, running.
But if the majority of my colleagues do um support this and again, but the you said that would give a solid protection that they're not in the uh running across hymens. And I mean, that was what I saw the the bet is that.
Yeah, I think that can depends and they.
And if that's fair, but again, I just can't ask cat anymore. Um, because I just think it's right thing to be honest with you.
Just offer you a little bit of spec. So uh, Pimau, she aside his point is the co violation. We not able to issue any permits for improvement or anything else until code violation is.
So what's that look? How do you resolve that?
The property owner is aware of the co violation. He has even contacted the building department and he's worked through resolving that. But again, his time for work and solution is his time.
Attorney, is the pretty owner going to have to abide that clause?
No, this is a permit with the MB owner. So that's what that's what this city manager was saying. It's that the property owner and the C to figure and get it.
Their whole notice assembly. There's that not hold the property owners for the fire just as we enter agreement with them and we um times on them. You're still don't the property owners go to.
The property owner has two of their businesses with Canada permit that are also located there. That renewal have a similar presentation what you're giving to for their renewals. So because there is an actual code enforcement action that's yet to result, we will put that to as a funding.
Another hurdle.
Yeah, I mean, it's that's not.
Sounds like gotta dig yourself out of it, but we're in touch as well.
Pretty near light fire and move forward. And we feel like it would be reasonable in some timeframes resolution of the uh code violation be six months and then other six months to become a rational. It's it's courage that they have infrastructure things there, but again, this party has.
It's like they're not considered eventually. I mean.
Their their circumstances are understandable. They're hurdle at points that need to resolve code violation and they need to get segregation units of property because you can't say it got.
I don't think they get resolved here tight with permit with the same permit, to be honest with you. So again, I'd say back to June somewhere else to go. Uh, and I've been challenging all the missions I get. Uh, we've with those limitations and plus two, like directly in our kids. So I'm standing by those limitations, but it's been ongoing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I was happy to say that I can show this and it this response is not giving me out of comment with this and it it it's caught me some more codes. I'm I'm feeling related. Like it's it just feels like um. I don't know. It's like maybe it'd be time to I had some feeling.
I can offer you a suggestion.
Please.
So the additions of approval say that we are asking for resolution of the code violation by December. It's halfway through this permit period. If this not met, then you have cause already. You made it at that point. And really is the code violations that are sort of the obstacle at this point. There is a subsequent issue of need to separate out the inside property. But that something is actionable and doable as long as you get property or there's a lot of on the pretty owner. So there is somewhat of a check balances for you. The code violation being need to be resolved by December for consideration, but I'm just gonna for that to.
So eventually it would be it it would almost like about six months. So and then at that point, if it's resulting of cost to pull out, graduating of a year. I mean, I'm that.
I can't really get that.
I think that'd be a good. Condition, which the staff mandate and all existing code violations, new location, seven eighty five Bay Road, the property compliance, persons of public health, municipal code, the California build code, no within number forty twenty five. So you gotta work with owner, build this done. But you got what like this is an indoor situation, right? It's gonna on that. That's uh the three rolling three overhead burst that you're gonna put on there and bottle this stuff, the equipment to this thing.
So essentially, we're just making that. I'm we're really here and I want to show that I'm gonna go that route. What we're doing is we're proving the one extension. However, if this is not done by December fifth, we have cause to bow. That we're still proving one extension. So that's what we're gonna prove. However, we'll come back. Have you just come to us like number is and say, I think this is happening and we're putting out number fifths. We have us, right?
You're you're not proving anything and you're giving rectitude back and approval.
Forced. Yeah. Okay. Do you get it? It's it's not for sale. So we're so we're would be giving stuff the like a board with back so that we prove one year number. Otherwise, we may would have an opportunity to pull out and then somebody else opportunity. Okay.
Can I ask them? So do you just buy all the equipment to take to something like all the the equipment, lights and stuff that you need? You brought that if you have all some.
It's it's disciplinary. It's not indoor facility. The indoor, there's an indoor cultivate that's in the remaining and build process. Nothing to do with us. We're we're so we have fixtures or just accounts, the things that purchase there.
And it's remember that our partners is to approve apartment and that's aside that, right? Just like just so that we're clear, right? So I'm sure you know how like you run an office like, but our our process, what we're concerned about is that we're called that.
Mayor, you actually have IU close public comments. This is your aggression that Victor mess raised to handle me again.
Okay, I did ask him to. It was a question. It's okay with Eddie. Uh, so Mr. Go ahead. Just one little comment, please.
You know what outputs? Or whatever um on the level of the time made that actually the same thing, but it's the thing again for uh for moving the long run. That's a for idea uh we can forward with. But importantly, just want to value that we are in communication with landlord and we are limited. But we are team to have them actually spoke him today. So just wanted again for him with you. We are in those communications with landlord and uh moving forward as well. Uh, kind of about uh try to see this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You're welcome. Okay, so uh me me and then so are we informed or just direct?
Just direct, bring back approval.
Okay, so I think we'll do it for direct for and then we'll we'll just come back. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, you're approaching the clock. You're gonna go past.
Yes, sir. Okay, can I contest continue? Okay, so we have. So, okay, so we're continuing. Okay, but before we close the next sign, I'm gonna take. I need to look a little. What's mayor? Are you? Yeah, that was a little something that's been moving. Okay, so I want to do next item. Our next item is um from point four initial report on uh this year twenty four, twenty five. Order three budget monitoring receive preliminary update regarding fiscal twenty five, twenty six to development. Okay, we get a.
We present that the loading is to moment here. David Maroni, city manager, and I'll be fighting days update. We do have a department heads here in audience and somehow lobby that um it was question specific of their department that uh you're more than welcome to to request uh feedback and their input. So I start, we have implemented quarterly, but sorry, this is actually outline your twenty sixteen bit plus C. It's a requirement. So we have amended that, brought this forward. Um, what it is is a snapshot in time of the third quarter with transactions hosting as of um that are all through March thirty first. So there is activities occur sense, but we cut it on March first is the end of your court. So um to give overview uh for general fund, we quickly start with this line. So the general revenues include the following, which is your sales taxes, your reporting taxes, your transient occupancy tax, EOT, that's the tell tax. Permit and licensing fee, charges, service, franchise fees, et cetera. Sale tax, so um consensus projected a flat con for twenty four, twenty five with moderate both for T five, twenty six, about two percent. That two percent is just, you know, not even a couple hundred thousand. So um on the regular sales, we do also have um, you know, your W, which is our additional X measure. So you you pick up a little bit of fun. Uh, the TT tax, so that has been stable. Um, as a reminder, as your V, that is was passed by voters. Uh, that's in effect in our OT tax from eight cent, twelve percent, and that takes effect July one. So that's the thing that we collect locally. It's paid our finance department and we we cut those receipts uh at based on the way the ballot man was written. That started July one. So that does factor into there's a bit. Uh, so for revenues, uh, what we have here, we have a Q three uh year date actuals. We have a basically year end. We have what we've budgeted twenty four, twenty five. We have the quarter three actuals and then we're predicting our year end. So we end twenty three, twenty four with um forty four million in revenue. Um, but this year fifty million. Talk a little more about that. Talked about one time revenues being used to offset uh some changes. So if you notice your your difference there, other transfers for the growth was the budget was opted along with um some some group in the in government that'll typically your grant. Um, come through our contract with other government agencies. So the increase there on our government was just some grant fund. Uh, quarter three, we're currently at thirty million. Um, this is if notice under taxes, you said the budget is fifteen million and we're shooting eight million, four million. Uh, that's because our proper tax comes into increment. And so property typically posts in quarter two and quarter four is you'll see the postings. Um, and so what happens is based on the tax rate, uh, that get remitted to the county tax collector folks, their property tax county. And then uh based on what the actuals are to be and what's expected to come in, they emit to us uh for any folk out there have a pretty and do not pay their tax bill and say they owe a thousand dollars and we're gonna see five hundred dollars of that. We still get that. It's all the A T teeter. We're a teeter. The county is a teeter county. And so what happens is they buy the revenue to us and they go after the 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 property owner and you find penalties that they're able to hear, they get keep. And that's the way that you see our cities get owed and a way for the county they end uh in in some venue additional. It's pretty pretty complex. So uh you would do to that up. Your sales tax revenue is a month's time. That gets rid of state and then posted into your your account. Um, all other as as we through the transfers on at the bottom, um, as to those we continue process those and we're projecting uh based on we we post. We but what we expect get we spend, we post a drawdown, uh, a a reimbursement. So we had some uh reimbursement that basically not gonna drop down this year would mean next year. That's okay because you have the expenditures as well. Those offset each other. Um, and then uh we have some of the taxes coming in a little later and overall we're leaning at about a million dollar projection of under budget for the revenues. So overall, general fund expenditures, this for all city departments, we are at overall C H set. Uh, I will note that um the way that are the attorney costs are through contract, they get applied to each uh department. So as we go through here, we talk about the department uh itself, the those costs uh are separate and walk through that. Essentially, we show it here, the grand total. And so we are at thirty five point three million is sixty eight percent of way through. We are trending um, we are trending higher or higher, but just slightly um personnel. Our service implies are um blunderbuss actually a little bit over and our capital expenditures are are under budget right now. Um, significant piece of that week a little bit earlier about the community center rooms. So they'll be going for bits. So you just pull them out. But if the project had quite started, they do not those expenditures there. So I will go to uh direct into the department memory. So we're gonna show the the department at the department level and include uh all funding sources. So this will be your general fund, your Med W, your Med G, grants, your enterprise funds. The thing of um is just apartment overall. So the rule of all their funds and where they're at. On the administrative services side, uh, they are trending seventy four percent. Uh, some of the services are um over budget and contractual side, uh, so those costs are one time control cost hit. So uh the fact that you're over there, um, should itself out doesn't mean it trend every day this amount. You could have buildings in it. And um that's why you would over that particular course. Similar to your renew coming later years, some of your expenses come in earlier or earlier in the year. Uh, your salary benefits are at seventy two percent. For the airport coming at sixty four percent, um, out for six percent on salary benefits, services, service implies as what's contractual, they under budget, the capital will be some uh grant work that has not quite stood yet. And uh maybe could into uh next year's budget depending on the time. Uh, on the city attorney side, we're currently uh at hundred and five percent. Um, some of these costs are for not only let us but any attorneys secure by Liz Smith. Um, and so this is one where we end up charging to the departments themselves. So as you see in all of the apartments, it's contractual, depending on who you the service that will be spreading. But when we gave the presentations before, uh, there was requests to be able to see just on those type of costs. When I get a summary of all departments, you not see that turn even there because we spread those costs to departments that are using those services. Uh, the D quick is at seventy three percent. Uh, again, this is a quick illustration of traction where it's like they're overbid just because of time. Um, that's actions. So it's a big charge. It's a hit January and your budget is gonna be over in your quarter three. There's no need, no concern because that's one time cost. So overall, that budget is trending um seventy three percent for quarter three, which I expect to be in trend even lower by then the actual budget is over. Uh, the council is at sixty seven percent. Um, right target with the with the SNL cost, which is be assumed um with the apartment that has five folks that, you know, it's not gonna be vacancies, the type of we budget in the the cost associated and then, you know, the five of your costs are spread across those. On servants supplies, uh, that has been uh kept. That's at about fifty percent. And then on the contractual side, that is at a hundred and two percent primarily due to uh eagle feet. On the managers budget working in at forty seven percent, I like to point as what it does in the charges of the verns lean for some of those uh the costs where they do havers, those different that administer the signage office. So that gets included there. Um, we do vacancies. So we have been at forty five percent over the three quarters. Um, our city manager heard in presentation earlier has been serving in capacity with unity services department. And so some of the costs spread across those departments is all based on the amount of work he's doing as different apartment, which is to further saving on uh other side. See treasure. So the treasures office, that's essentially uh, you know, the spin and benefits. And so there is uh some things there from healthcare costs that would just add it every year. I mean, um, the development. Community development, uh, this program is at uh this department is at forty six percent. Uh, there are vacancies obviously, which led to saving there uh through uh through working with with department. There's a vendor voice that are outstanding that they're working with vendors to rec buy. So I expect that the number will increase significantly. Um, that for your contracted uh building and plant services, uh, so just working through um uh approving the invoices and have proper uh backups and all of that. With part of the process, we do any invoices. The engineering department is meeting in at sixty four percent. Um, all of those costs are um well in budget. We have had active recommend for the city engineer position. Um, as with modies, cities, counties struggle to fill that position. That's very difficult position to fill and what you're in eleven, it's been the engineering field is a big shift contracted firms to where candidates are are preferring and seem to work more with contracted firms. And um and providing contract service directly city in case. Seeing more of that. Uh, the fire department coming in at seventy six percent, um, at the budget at six point three under capital, a little over five hundred and I would say six thousand uh be going towards um the the down payment on the till work and working that through uh the leasing money in finance. Um, then uh your salary is trend over at a one percent. Uh, contractual side, um, that's at eight six percent, service supply six, seven percent. And uh Chief Green has done a great job working to um contain uh awesome budget and looking at ways to uh, you know, save a general fee as well. So for IT, so we're um at sixty percent. Um, our IT welcome. And so um but did have some uh costs associated with with our former director's retirement, obviously. So those bill as well because he retired in the fiscal year. Uh, and then uh under the contractual side, just point out that you have a lot of fees hit in uh in quarter one. See that the quarter one was three hundred thousand. Then it's, you know, over the next two quarter, only went about a hundred four thousand. To be affected, the IT department, a lot of their purses are, you know, annual inscription or big one time shots. So. Uh, pardon rec department is at seven percent and uh salaries about sixty six percent. Uh, our director had done a great job of working, coming up with different ways to look at service delivery and to um bring us in, contain us. And um it's doing a lot of work to start doing them. Some um a lot of work in downtown area we've discussed in the past and we're excited to see that. Started creating. Let's think of it as reading the downtown part. Police department, uh, this is not only PD, but also code enforcement and animal control service. They're meeting in at seventy three percent, uh, a little bit over in the uh salary impetus. But uh overall uh with within it. And I should point out that in maybe three or four months, though, we work with department. We gave you the data quarter two summary. We worked with many of the departments to reduce the budget as well. So I should point out that this these budget amounts are posted as amendment as well. So uh that was taking things and deal with budget. Um, that's added to programs that water, wastewater, veil maintenance, street maintenance, all waste, um, holding bonds, official apartment in parks should over um to park rec. And so the building grounds, the C facilities, property, that type of thing, and the briggled, which sits in its own one. So uh overall, they're at uh six, five percent. And so um. Your salary benefits are sixty seven, services supplies is a bit over budget for um, again, you know, this is Q three. So a lot of costs, especially public works can be in time nature, we can push average ups. Um, and the contractual side at fifty six percent and sixty percent on cap side. Uh, your CIPs, um, we currently at thirty three percent. Um, we also in process of aligning all the bill, the blean for um the major road project that finished as well as um the roundabout is also included there. The work was just recently done. Um, and so that's where we're gonna have all the capital projects. Uh, and that's about thirty three percent. We have some that will carry over and those funds main as balance and then would be rigid depending on grant process. And so um overall, from the staffing side, this very little staff port, those that's picked up their departments, um, your service supplies is farther budget as is the track side. And contractual side, um, there are some sold costs that are included in there that um that would not realize. I talked about the grand avenue was two offs each other. You can't bill for the grand, you have to spend it. Uh, on parts, so this is gonna be debt service, your accounting transfers, cost related to city hall. Um, overall, um, that is at fifty four percent and uh trending under budget. So altogether, this is all department, all funds. This is where I pointed out, we'd get to slide, showed all departments, but does say the attorney on there. That's because those expenses are billed the proper parts. All of that collectively, we are at fifty seven percent and uh and trading on on target. Um, we will have obviously some savings along base, actually our cap approved project um for time and then the savings project still going. Those we've acted for in your budget. Um, because not all projects end on G thirty. So we're sure that this are really accounted for. At point, I would be happy to stop if there's any question along the way based on any slides seen before, or I can continue to receive forward. Okay. So overall, a reminder, the four, twenty five budget included one time venue sources and program vacant savings, approximately six million dollars in one time savings approved. That's on general fund side. As I mentioned, departments ask for a mere percent adjustments. You recently opted comprehensive user fee study, those rates usually have a sixty day waiting period. So those went to in early April of those rates, those fees that's on the user fee set. Staffs finalized in the enterprise studies and rental study at the report that the report directors work on. Then we create a mechanism to the second one fifteen trust to offer the pre funding retirement healthcare contribution. Now for twenty five, twenty six, we're going to go into some budget development. As you're aware, we come back with the budget hearings, we're scaling that for new ninth and then bid adoption on the sixteenth. So staff provide multiple dates to council regarding budget legislation strategies, projected revenue expenditure reductions. The last time spoke about that, the AFREC ended reducing general fund revenues by two and a half percent. Next expenditures by ten percent and billion I can repay plan for funds negative imbalance. That's also talked about these vacancies and continuing that process, looking at we build reserves and in the budget back under the, those tents. On May fifth, at the last meeting we had, council gave direction to build the five, twenty six budget. The assumption of the fire contracts concluding on December twentieth. If parties, and I want to be clear, if parties end up continuing the contract, budget can be amended, the contract amends are adopted. So as any agreement, you can always go budget amendment with that agreement would be in a, you know, a reflect of whatever the agreements be. So as we continue digging through, I've identified revenue pack that we're going to must address in the but develop. Safe program that we had partnered with the county behavioral health department funding two hundred and eight thousand dollars is not being reviewed as a minimum count. Went to a debt service delivery model. We are fortunate enough to have recently received a substantial investigative unit fund should offset that. It's a different sign. And so, and, and a different sorts of funds as well. We will see if everything goes projected and increase in T O T revenue. One of the things to remember on T O T side is that we have the hotel incentive program for the major hotels that came to oversee. It's a seven percent of T O T revenue back until reach two million dollars or tenures, whatever comes first. So you could see the T O T revenues increase, but giving back seven percent. And we talked about that in the ballot measures being discussed. You also run the chance of, you know, hotels kind of back in the rate that they're going to charge. So based on T O T going up, but they were lost the room, so the grant owed is still hard that they're trying to hit. That could result in, you know, not much of an increase in T T because maybe you're going to raise the price some to then have rate. Because the end day, the rate that the hotel guest cares, you know, hundred fifty eight, not as current as how fee go into that, going to communities. You may see fifty fees for the rear room, right? O T one of those. A lot of fire contract revenue, so approximately one point two six million for county and a hundred and forty eight thousand. Again, that's assuming the revenue for, you know, until December twentieth, just paraded. Willst increase lease revenue for brick building fund, which will help offset extent elevator updates, upgrades, excuse me. And so fund lives in its own fund. And so, you know, happy to work working on in the elevator updated and the proceeds from lease will cover that completely. We done is head just to get the front dollars because that fund did not have enough support of the upfront costs is we do a small from another fund to it. Three year loans. So the rent proceeds will pay back as well as provided general renewed fund, which we're excited about as well as provide a location for the new charter high school. I had working with our appeaser that we've used in the past to help the sale of one eighty maple, for you would always do look at an appraisal. We had, we talked about a bit strategy. So before I could obtain any pricing terms officially and have an item like we had earlier day on ice in terms, you will start with appraisal. It's always good to see where, where the value is, is strong interest currently in that bill. So also identifying one time cost increase that must be addressed in budget development. So the city is in an agreement with county for a safe rating project, think of as like alternate patch center. There's been some regretting that how the costs are split, but ultimately those reimburse have not made in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, so we had to take that into account. We do have, we're working to fundraise against the cost of visiting the alley. We do have merchant fees that, you know, earlier night you gave direction on your emergency council that was around the pandemic. That time there was effort made to increase online transactions. Those merchant fees are, are no longer being collected or passed on to the users fees. So when you set your credit card at a merchant, there are costs associated with that. If you set your card at Starbucks for ten dollars, may see ninety or in seventy because of fee associated with that. That typically gets passed on working with a credit card processor to ensure that functionality is restored and not subsidize the use of credit cards. And then the general plan update, house element dates, we talked about our last meeting, where meetings ago, we will be bringing the items back with quotes. Early indicators are in the five thousand dollar range. I have to the budget assuming solvency costs as well. As in guard to ongoing cost increase must be addressed, have insurance premium cost that will be increased by about eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. An increase, not the total amount as most insurance is rated on experience or in an insurance pool, nine or cities. And so as you look at how they back those rates, I would expect for that to come down a few years. That project tension with the, the, the safety app project radius more of its patch. The county, the current agreement will be roughly around a hundred thousand dollars annually. Again, we look to look at that in our shit and how that working. But if those costs are technically, we have addressed that is something that is on contract. Maybe a year and a half ago, we had discussions around the city owns a small piece of the landfill. We own about acres of there of the original landfill. Has been those basically nineteen eighty two, yet own it. And so there are permit requirements that we have to do. There's monitoring, monitoring wells, those types of things, those off costs associated with it. So our portion, we have ten year permit renewal and work with the state. That's three hundred thousand dollars. That is a, you know, every year typically thirty thousand for your annual, the tenure is a big process. It is a positive. So if they come in at two thirty, then do that, you know, it, it was a deposit basis, but still had a budget cleanly. Hollister Farms incentive program, so in tier budget that account for that previous account, there was a one time payment made just strictly out of the general fund. We had proved that backup and built out the loan as the way that it was approved council. So what happened there is it was a loan from the farm fund and about is seven, five percent of tax revenue from Hollister Farm shopping area. Goes back to pay that loan and blow this lead off and looks like probably be for the five years. They can need to build out jobs. So there in the, in the area mentioned that sort of to accelerate that. As we collect sales, no, twenty, seventy five percent is going back to pay loan. We have a lot of great incentive programs. But as many incentive prem you're being, you're incentivizing first over the first five or six years and the steps to the benefit in perpetuity. Inflationary impacts have increased significantly across all funds. So just like everybody else, we are a business and we have been dealing with the, the cost of fuel. Fuel just been recently, it was one I to the gas station yesterday and was, was probably up two, five, thirty cents of last week via fuel, right? You're a business. And then I mentioned the section one fifteen trust. So the unfunded actuarial liability pen rates continue to skyrocket. With the previous twenty and twenty three and twenty four costs recently posted, we pack available balance across all funds. Any fund has personnel costs, so an impact fee not going to, an impact fee fund not going to have personnel associated with. So it does impact those, any of the ones that do person cost, those are impact. And I wanted to come minutes to walk through what that looks like. So with your pension liability, and this was kind of corrupt of the section one fifteen trust that brought board. And that was a mechanism to save, doesn't, you know, we have to deposit into it and we haven't started pre funding yet. These are the pension liabilities that are on the books. What happens is purse goes through, they've got, there's basically nine for, uh, nine different tiers that of pension plans. We have fair lease and then miscellaneous everybody else. So I'd be miscellaneous. B forty five, B forty nine, any of them, they're in those ones that purchase everybody else land, the miscellaneous category. And so as we, as, as we lay this actuarial liability is two point million. What they do is they, they produce these every year. They do actual schedule for every single city, counties, partners, but on every single plan they have. And so this is easy to think of is what we have to into the table to ensure that the, the retirees, the fund is there to pay your tires. And so this outside of you collect for regular pension, though, you know, the city would pay percentage of my retirement, I put a percentage in. Out of page, I could work that many of the employees, they know what plan you're in, and then that's delivered to us. Your, your pension liability is on top of that. So as you can see, in twenty four, twenty five, that has grown three point four or three point five. It's going up by their six hundred thousand extra and then nearly other three hundred twenty three and third thousand next year. And then it continues to grow. And what happens every year, they will, you know, reassess those values. What it is, is they, when actuaries go through, you know, they figure out who's the plan, how old are they, how many years, mail, email. They've got more data than we probably imagine when they do the actuarial tails. And they, what's called this counter eight. And this counter eight is what they reduce your liability on based on the sum of what get in the stock market. And so if they have an assumption that they're going makes six and a half percent, then that's what they'll you on. And if they didn't make that, make up the dips. And so that's, that's essentially how it works. And so if they'd better, they adjust rate because they always overperform as well. So basically for the next five year estimates, that's a one, four million dollar. Think of that as debt. You're going to start oyster bugging with debt. Who do you owe first? And so we had there give you illustration and through the, the non classification there. Bro, the, the pension reform classifications that came twenty thirteen, which have lower benefit rates, lower per contributions all the way around. So we're but development based on the factors that laid out this evening, we're working with the department heads and staff to identify additional scenes. But to revise revenue reduction to get to thirteen and a half or expenditure reduction target, seven and a half that does account for starting your fund repayment plan. As we discussed at the budget strategy meeting, it had several funds for multiple model years, been negative. You have to have plan in place to address those. And so we will be bringing forward with budget, an actual repayment plan. Essentially what you do is eat that like debt in your budgeting. So for next year would have a form land. And you start, you start with your pension, you start with your expense, your debt, bond, pants, all those. You would also include in there your fund payment program. We are working to finalize with state, it had item your sent out this evening that was a resolution through LO S. They've permission to complete application to have them release COVID eighteen funding. That's all been to end, been working with them for multiple years to recoup some of those funds that were spent. As with cities and counties, it's extremely difficult to get reimbursement from FEMA. I think I you, when I asked for reimbursement, the stand here stickers, a six feet apart, they wanted PS coordinates for those, there's risk. And that was, you know, hundred dollar reimbursement. I mean, no one's going to have that. And so what will happen is we'll get that, that payment deposited in that account. And then that makes your liability to that account smaller by the two and thirty thousand. And so we're hoping to see it in the next few weeks. So as I said earlier, we'll have budget hearing on June ninth. We'll walk through everything based on the discussion here in, in the direction and with the, the target. And then depending on how that evening goes, you know, depending on the direction we get, we would schedule for comeback sixth for option. That's where we'd come back and adopt all the ideas that could be done. And with that, happy answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you for that interview, Senator. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments for Senator? Come around, see you again, please.
Can you, can you go over, what is our, our lead fee total for the city for the year for?
As quarter three.
And this is all costs?
Yeah, eight, seventy five through quarter three.
So is everything spelled out to department zone?
Yeah. So essentially that's we do it. We, so it's certainly like this because we've been asked that pass otherwise. If I give you a slide like this to quickly see how much of contractual clerks, the attorney fee would be difficult. So we, we run slide like this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You have a question, go ahead.
It's on the unfunded actuarial liabilities side. It's like, it was twenty three, twenty four, it was a shy of three million dollars and nine thirty, it projected to be at five point five million. So are, I mean, there have to be other municipalities that are facing this same thing. This is, seems almost unsustainable, we're like eight, two point eight to five point five in less than ten years. What are other municipalities doing to get that like attainment?
So what, there are strategies you can, if you have cash available to do. So part like the section one fifteen trust we set up, what that allows you to do is you pre fund. What you're doing is you're making additional investments in that fund. And by you, you have production, you know, payroll, not from the employees, this program in and say a percent of salaries benefits is into the account. Investment options that hopefully would yield higher results than, than you get through life was the state's best, the state's investment. As you grow that, you could pay that down. Overall, I mean, you've seen some communities do a pension bond, offset some of the costs, but you're seeing cats and city everyone go through this. As, and you'll see that continue to grow, especially on the classic side, as more of the classic members retire out. And those, the classic members have higher benefit rate at a younger age. But when someone retires out, they go in a factor of enduring that, that they pay, right? Because that's the obligation, that's just, they're, they're entitled to that. They, they ate into it and that was the, the program that they're in. So we are in, in a pool. So we're pooled with other cities and counties and all these in case are, are, are going to this. It's just, it's the nature of how pensions them works. So in the state public is our website, essentially a caller that shows this year, the next year, and then they send you all actuarials each year. And that's the, the rates decide. And then they do, they come in, you do it annually or they'll do monthly, be a discount to come annually. But they can run your, and they take those dollars, like they do your pension allowance and healthcare provide through hers as well. And so they, so can manage, it's all includes part of bills.
If I may, city manager just want to add one nation pepper for firms. So pepper there was also increasing from fifty five, for example, every jurisdiction negotiates your tracks. With the miscellaneous, a piece officers retire fifty, the certain like three percent empty, three percent where every work at a retiring age fifty. It's like it could be two point five, two point seven, two point oh, fifty fives for if you worked, they can retire at age of five. So if you were ten years, it would be two times ten when you retire age like for double fifty five. What Pepper was then extend the age. So now you can retire fifty or fifty five, you have to retire at sixty two or sixty seven. You also must fifty percent of the cost of pension. That's also a comment. What happens is now people don't get money, they have to a lot longer. It also has a lot of issues. For example, like if you're a firefighter, you know, expect to run into fire at six, sixty seven, six, two. Most of our, our piece officers and fighters can totally do that. These have happened since twenty thirteen and a lot of our students pay unfunded, let's call it unliability. They actually pin and put percent of what is really going to be paid. If they have money, they pay more to that. There's a lot of different strategies that are extremely successful. This issue we're seeing, you know, you might see it, a lot of other cases resolved in twenty thirteen. I think the bigger issue with pension is that when, because also caps, so the cap, how much you can, you can actually take home when you retire. Twenty thirteen started under into one thousand, right now a hundred fifty one thousand. If you make, then that your cap, then you can treat into pension. So there's money in the wrong causes their issue. At the minute, there's a lot of strategies that have been implemented twenty fifteen to address that.
There.
Okay. Yeah, I had. Thank you. So I've heard since I got off and since went to the United Center that there's probably been other instance. It's never been really broadly here. I'm Kiss. Did you put together this graph?
So we put together, you know, the actuarial reports, they gave us, we have a report for each one of the, where it says miscellaneous, miscellaneous, and tier. So those are just key.
And I'm wondering the salary increases that we go over as well.
In the future, it will be as the folks that retire based on a higher rate come for.
And some of the people that those salaries are retired, it's reflected here.
If, if your tire was based on that, then so if say you went up and your salary went up five percent and you were a classic member, your highest year calculations, which is how your pension is built, will be reflective somewhere in here, depending how well this informs.
Okay. And you don't get going down. Let me continue. It's obviously.
Okay. It'll, it'll go for six, again, about years. I mean, it's, it's part of why Pepper was brought in. Pepper has its challenges that council memorals fought for, but Pepper was brought in because the, the unfold.
Okay. Is there my question right now? Maybe there's a comment after public.
Okay. Let's go to the com. And if you have any other questions, let's go to the comment. There's a.
The public comments.
Can you know the comment? Okay. So any, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we can give directions staff so that they'll move forward with this. I also send it.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm going to just read some of the things I said for, this is not a drill. I read this is not a drill. We've talked about this, you know, saving for any day, some jurisdictions go through times, I think. I know now that this is where headed on with their mobile public entities sounding out. I'm going to say this thing I've before, but that's full expense of the council, we, the council raises, we gave discretionary funds were increased. And that was going to, we're very nervous to staff the last couple of years. We hired a number of employees, I mean, I keep on and on. And I remember every time for those two years, when the previous council was here, I was, I felt frustrated, but I still felt sick and very nervous. And we did the budget because my colleagues at time, my call at the time did not listen to the direction and advice of the experts. Not just us, but our issue, I'm going to, I'm going to say this again and again, because we openly transparent about how we got here. And I voted as the budget the last two times. Having said that, and though this is not great, hearing good news, and conferences that we're having, even though learning things every day. I'm hearing some things, some good news, but we really need to part with, with DAF to those goals. So I'm going to please ask you to list the direction of the experts, city manager and partner of us moving forward. I also be transparent with the community, it's going to have anything on its own. And last not least, oh, the best of all is that have a council and the council members and new mayor, they signed up aware of what they walking to. And they knew they had the challenge that we're seeing because of the financials that were caused by previous account, they knew that. And they're very competent in doing that. So I have faith in my colleagues, the majority colleague up here, that are going to get us through this and part with the community and with the employees. But we need your help. I've said over and over again, please hear warning, know that we're going to do, we're going to do things in hardship for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
In hardship for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Send us other options or comments. Do you have any, okay. Go ahead, Ken.
So while I appreciate Councilmember, this is meant, you know, a hundred percent a budget increase, a hundred percent a budget increase. There's absolutely no way anyone do the math. There's absolutely no way anyone do the math that two, that two, you know, two, four years adds up to one plan a budget. There's four years adds up to one plan a budget. That two, you know, two, that two, you know, two, four years adds up to one percent a budget. There's the four years adds up to one percent a budget. There's the math, so you can't continue to blame the council for this, but you have to pass a balance, but. So part of it is signaling that we're in a situation, but again, set the comment last me, they happened in twenty thirteen, fourteen, prior to all this. It's it's about them that we stop with blame and forward solutions or continue to or to stop spreading misinformation unless you set on this.
Okay, so we're gonna, yeah, we're just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna thank, uh, come over for a comment and I'm gonna move us on. So clearly been saying the message that we're very difficult here. We are going to have to, we have in, I think, thanks to all, uh, the city of the lead on tiny year belt and then work their city manager. Thank you, thanks to all, uh, the city of the lead on tiny year belt and then work their city manager. This is not a thing to, this continue to be a fear. So we welcome you to ask to ask that tight notes, but appreciate the in depth report from our city manager. And I, I guess the direction is just move forward with your recommendations for the budget and I'd be vote to next meeting to hear more on what the budget for sure like it. Yeah, so I don't know if you have more action than.
No, just clarifying revenue reduction, when we talk, we did have two and a half percent, we also had the removal of one time on that. So it's that elect impact because you had that, you had that one time avenue. So I just want to point out, that was included before. So that shift isn't as as grandiose at Mayfield, all the expenditure piece is.
Okay, okay. So any other action that you need or is that, is that?
More an update and we bring the budget, budget hearing.
Okay, thank you for that. We're going to move along and we're going to commit a submit. So any council members, if you had anything to report, any equities, add source, statements, also with councilor, any report?
Thank you, Stevens. I had with ag, a whole of time, I think, last week, the Monday, we're generating a tour, but it was very well done. The farmer got to go there, they drove through their lands, then we, they being actually out there on the local farm here to talk about all the highway we've adopted out would affect their their properties. So having said, we went to call, we gave direction on we would like to be moving forward and yeah, a few more from Infield, reach out to me, any of my colleagues that there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, do you have anything to report? I'm going to ask you to report on the animal service ad hoc, we just have Friday. Please write on the ad hoc that had on Friday with, I just, do you just report on what you, what you thought that you, what are goals and stuff? Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you, Stevens. I will report to the, I was late to the meeting, so I mean.
She was at work now.
Thank you for that. So we went together with a member of county, the mayor, Sam Vitas, unable to join us. And we also gathered other community members to form an ad hoc to try to rectify the situation of the ongoing issue with animal services. So we really is wanting to take more, I say, a more of a humility approach to it. You know, we really care about animals and we want to try to be able to partner with community members, members of county and members of Amatista, be able to move with solutions. How and buy with care, love that you need and just have a more human approach. So that's about it. That's all I.
Thank you. Yes, I just add that, that we have our tools with that. And then the other goal is to more cost active. Though we want to see if there's a way for us to buy more main, so as well save some dollars. We, again, we need find ways, Sabres. We are forming partnership with our county and Amatista, hopefully, to fund this to others and community. Okay, thank you for that. We were putting this, also, I'll add that we had, so so councilor minister, ribbon on car, just also in that we both attended, come over and this and I attended ribbon cutting for TA and the new facility. And that was really, really fun, exciting. We were able to talk about the more public transportation needs, especially for young folks, for example, our avalanche student and address that was society. And then I'm going to just say a little bit and then let councilor, I'm sorry, mayor Jay speak as well. We met yesterday with with the Confederation, which called Monterey A Confession Club, a federation of various bigger club. They come together to talk about some of the things there were about related to writing their recitals, also for sorting their units and each other. And it was a really way for to talk about rally as well as learn to what your thoughts are, well, that's really fun aside. So that's what I have to report. I'm going to ask mayor Jay to report, anything you want to say on that as well, any other reports?
Plenty to report on. Like the mayor said, we went to the Monterey A Confederation of Clubs, all the motorcycle club in the central California area. All over every club, there was really fit clubs presented, I even thought that existed. A lot of these could do a lot of things for the community. They felt were happy, part of the conversations that just include, just felt, it felt like really to be entered in a lot of ideas, concerns. To take just stuff that if we implement into this particular rally, they expressed interest in having us back after the four July rally in July. I think it was thirteenth to brief, what well, what, you know, couldn't differ, and we got good contacts on that group that relates to the, what was the nineteen ninety seven, the fifth, right? So there are some of the one groups, actually, because they're the ones that that go, so I was looking at information on the Monterey A Confederation of Clubs. In addition, I went to association Monterey area governments and surprise amount information, printout pack this thick for every meeting. Needs go quick, but one of the biggest things was an update on central California rural regional energy work. Don't think of the slot, but P G is is massive, they're huge and they have the capability to create programs that fit every community. And it's just good to know that, you know, all that, seeing all that. In that meeting, they're looking to do what rare pay and looking at ways of saving rate, there's money, so many on that and see if we can bring some of these programs to the hall. Because I know that energy is expensive everywhere. C is a business, we buy a lot of services, we have a lot of fuel and, you know, we have to bring these things to our constituents here. Last I go to the council government meeting with council member Sendez. It is important for anyone still listening at home that there are a lot of people working on improving California twenty five. I know the the, I would now be worked on traffic is kind of a little bit of a challenge. I'm just asking everybody to be very patient with each other. You know, just be patient with each other on the roads, get home to your families safe, get home to family, the version of yourself that would prefer to be if you didn't have to do that because you tripped a pole. But there, there is a proposed route that all trans considering now that goes through Lushes from land, amazing, here will farm ones. There is the exist route that a lot of are discounting, but that why the existing wood is is still an option and then you want to up to Sanford Bay, a lot of that. Soil composition in the Sanford Bay area or in the existing California twenty five, off to that northeast side road has traveled up. It's just not good. There are a couple farms that we are farming that area, beautiful property going right now, but that whole south of West Side is very beautiful. So it's would be tough to see that. A lot of people are working on that. The county was present as was the city.
Thank you, thank you for the report. Councilor Ellis?
So I attended a ship of communication and it was a lot of graduate, including workers, employees, and they all was wonderful. Academy learned a lot and hopefully it can.
Okay, good for them. Okay, so I think we're going to want to count report. I'm sorry, city manager report.
And then.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so then we are going, we're going to close session, we need to empty chamber and we're going to move on to sessions. So first of all, do we need like comments for these items?
Nope.
Okay, and then do you need to read these? Okay.
There's two additional, just as a reminder, going in for late negotiations, well, in addition to court's legal counsel and to pay litigation, so government section five, four and five, six point and significant expedition litigation. Pursuant to our graphic or three submission D of seven five or nine five six point of the government code one case. And then courts of legal counsel as paid litigation, so government section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, significant expedition litigation, so to pair of two or three submission D, action four and five, six point nine of the government, request a cure on annihilation, where ground refilled.
Okay, thank you. Also, we're going to go close to NASA, so.